Okay, go ahead Perry.
Okay, we'll do it again. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all. Alright, let's go straight to the consent agenda. My agenda moving. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there anything anyone wants to discuss? And or you know pull off the list to discuss outside of the consent agenda? Okay, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Aye.
Alright. The for your information, the February Bosie spotlight is out there. Also, this Bosie's by the number, by the numbers, I should say, there's a link in under the public content. Assume you you've seen it, but just both of these are out there for for your information. So then we'll move straight into, but there's no questions about Bosie's. We'll move straight into budget update on operations and maintenance.
So good evening, everybody. We are continuing with our series of departmental budget presentations. And Mike Raguista will be presenting today his update on operations and maintenance. And he has a presentation for you that I'm gonna spark up in a moment.
Well, while we're doing that, I don't know if anybody's driven by Elm, but I've been told that the stream of steam that used to pour out of the building for as long as I can remember is now gone. It's been fixed.
I understand on Thunder.
I, Mike, I don't know where you found parts because we keep being told that's like an old piece of garbage system. But it, after all these years of wondering why we're, you know, steam cleaning the outside of the school building, it's gone. Be curious to see if it, how much heat it actually saved us, but excellent work.
So what we did over there, you want to know what we did?
Sure.
So I talked to a bunch of contractors that I know and we're trying to figure out some stuff. And what we did is we took a heat gun and went through all the lines and checked all the traps. And we found two valves that were burnt through, two little gate valves. And we rebuilt all the traps in the tunnels. And we got it for a day and then it came back and then we had, we've, what we're doing is we're pushing some dirt through. And then we found which trap was leaking by, the brand new one. And we took it apart, cleaned it, and we got it for another couple of days. And then it came back a little tiny bit and we went through, we've been going, we've been working on this for about a month now. But you know, doing a little bit each day, whatever we can get done. And now I'm pretty sure if it keeps, after a few days, if we start to get a little steam, we have to find which trap is leaking by. And what we may have to do, I talked to a couple of contractors, is flood the system with water on a day that there's nobody there to try and flush out the pipes, flood the steam system with water and then drain it back as it comes back to the condensate to clean, try to clean out the pipes a little bit. And I'm pretty sure we're getting it for longer and longer each time we do it when we find some dirt. So I'm thinking it may just work out with purging itself without having to flood the system. But if we have to do that on a day that there's no kids there, we'll have to try doing that. But I think we're
Well, just tell your guys that, I mean, after all the years of just being dumbfounded by that steam pouring out of the building, having it gone, tell your guys we said excellent job. Thanks, thanks. Alright, let's go to the facilities.
Okay, so the facilities department is here to keep our students and staff safe and provide a good learning environment. And this budget will allow us to accomplish this. Okay? So, alright. I'm gonna look at it at the same time. So the first page, custodial overtime, games on Saturdays, you know, events, filling in for absent people, that usually stays pretty much the same every year because we haven't gone over and we're right about that number every year. It's been averaging out the same, so all that, there's really no change. So then we go to equipment grounds. Alright, so in the last five years, we've bought a pickup truck with a plow, we've bought a snowball attachment for the Kubota, we've bought plow assemblies, sanders for the pickup truck that we purchased the following, we bought a sander and a plow setup for the pickup truck that we purchased the following year because with the money we had, it wasn't enough to do it all in one year. So then the following year after that, we bought a Kubota tractor with a plow. And then this year, what we did was, we have a dump truck with only twenty, with only 20,000 miles on it. And then price of a new dump truck is astronomical. So we had the whole bed rebuilt because it was rotted and falling off the truck. And we had the whole bottom of the truck sand blasted and undercoated. And we also purchased a 72-inch Tiger Cat mower. And then looking ahead, what we're gonna do is this year, we had to cut back a little bit because everything is, we're going into a tighter budget year. So for the one, for one year, what we need is we can save a lot of money by buying a post hole digger for our big tractor because then we won't have to pay someone else to come and put ballards in and fences and stuff, you know, fence posts and stuff like that. We can do a lot of the stuff ourselves. We're gonna buy a sidewalk brush for the 2670 machine we have and also a snowblower for the big machine. And then next, that's this coming year. Then the next year, we would need to buy another pickup truck to replace the 2006 Dodge. Then a plow is, then the following year, we would buy a plow assembly and a sander for the new pickup that we're buying and another scag mower to replace the 2008 model. And then the next year, we would buy a tractor, a small tractor with a plow to replace the 2012 model because that would be 13 years old. And then the next year, we're looking at to replace a van that would replace the 2012 model. That would be 13 years old, 14 years old.
So we really, we do that many post holes that we need to go buy it, buy a digger?
Well, they're kind
I mean, I'm just, I honestly, I don't, I don't know. How many are we talking, like five a year or?
Well, this year alone, we did eight and six. 14, we did 14 at Elm and we have, we have to do six at Alden. And when we do the electrical project, we have, you know, we can
I'm just gonna say this, they're throwing the horse, Perry, and digging holes, man, by hand? I don't, it takes a lot of labor, it takes a lot of labor. They're digging three feet, go below the freeze line. I'm just saying, man, I did it myself. It's a lot, man. I mean, I'm just saying, how much is it?
My point, you know, I was thinking more about it, would it be cheaper if we're not doing that many or we're not doing them that often? You go and rent one for, for two days and, and then you're not paying the depreciation on the thing. I assume that's a capital item. But you know, that's, I mean, if, if we're doing post holes every other day or, you know, three a week or five a week, I don't want anybody out there with that two handled thing trying to dig a hole.
Yeah, right.
But, you know.
Mike, is there other uses for it too, like an auger? Is it anything besides just, I mean, you know, that you guys use it for?
I mean, I would replace some of the two inch ones that we have around the, the gas tanks and stuff like that. I would replace them with three inch and four inch ones, like, you know, and fill them with concrete instead of some of the ones that we have. There's a lot of things. I get it, but I mean, I'd like to be able to do things on our own without having to go out all the time and, you know.
Well, trust me, and renting back holes and stuff here for the property, you're right though Perry, it looks less expensive. But if they're gonna bring it to you and deliver it, we're gonna use our own trucks to go get it, it might be worse. But I know when it, when they bring it to you.
My only, you know, just as long as we've thought it through, this is
That's a good point.
Yeah, the best, because the other thing is, we gotta maintain this stuff.
Right.
You know, we don't want to have, you know, have this post hole digger. We do 10 holes and then it goes, sits in some corner someplace. And the next time we need to use it, we gotta rebuild it because it's all rusted or, you know, the snow blower was taken off. It wasn't, we gotta make sure that we have a plan in place if we're buying stuff to take good care of this stuff.
So this five-year plan on equipment that Mike put together is based on his experience of what he's had to do and his role over the past 17 years here and what he's anticipating needing to do. So that's a little bit of why he chose to put that on the, on the list for equipment in particularly what would have been even more of a lull year. So just empowering his guys to be able to, and gals to be able to do the work instead of hiring out to be able to do it. As an example, we were quoted $918 to do $1 on our capital project. So, you know, when you're looking at, at costs like that coming through, the proactivity is, is nice.
Just, just make sure, I mean, when I look at a dump bed, and I get it, it's 18 years old, but it's got 20,000 miles on it and it's rotted through. I'm, are, you know, are we actually taking care of this stuff? Or do we need someplace to put it so that it's not just sitting out in the salt and the rain? But just make sure, I, my, my personal point is just make sure you're not just buying the stuff, but you're, you've got a plan that allows you to do regular maintenance on it. If you need somebody else to do regular maintenance, so be it. But make sure that those dollars are in the plan, so we're not just, you know, running them till, as they say, the wheels fall off.
No, we haven't been, we've been taking, we've been taking maintenance, we've been doing maintenance on all our new equipment and all the old equipment now. And things have been lasting longer and things are in better shape. I mean, if you look at all the mowers and stuff I've bought over the years, most of them still look new. But they, they take, they take a beating, like the truck, the rotted bed on the truck is from, we use a lot of sand and salt up there. There's no way, I mean, it just rots the brake lines and the fuel lines and it rots the bed of the truck. There's no way around it unless you would have washed the truck after every snowstorm and we don't, you know, you can't do that all winter long. So. Okay. Alright, so then we go to 202, equipment for custodial. Next year, 2020, 21, 22, we'll be buying another walk behind floor machine for the middle school. Last year, we bought one for Alden. Here, what we did was we bought four small floor machines for tight spaces for the kitchens and the bathrooms. And my, we bought one at the beginning of the year to try it and my guys liked it. It made it a lot easier to do kitchens and bathrooms, so we bought one for each building. So that was what we spent the money on this year. And then next year, we're gonna go to another walk behind floor machine so we can get one in each building, in each section.
Now, Mike, you're getting, you're making sure that we've got, because I don't want to go backwards on, you know, sanitizing the school. I mean, you guys are doing a regularly scheduled, you know, cleansing of the school, the school buildings, basically. I don't want to go backwards when, you know, knock on wood, this thing is quote unquote over. You know, I mean, it's, it doesn't just help us with COVID, it helps us with everything. So make sure that, you know, the money is in there so that the, whatever they are, the misters or in the sprayers and all that stuff, don't go, you know.
Don't go, okay. Yeah, we, we have enough, we, we've been buying, we'll keep buying it when we're done. And we'll just keep doing what we're doing. I think, I think even in the winter for cold and flu and everything else, what we're doing is gonna help with everything, not just COVID. I mean, I think it's a good idea to just keep doing what we're doing. It's gonna be it's gonna be a little tougher when we go back full time with, with, you know, 24 deaths in a classroom. But we'll, you know, at least we can do it every other night, half the rooms and, you know, we're gonna keep doing what we can do to keep disinfecting. Because it seems to me like it works out pretty well. So. Okay, so then we go to the next one. It's 402, so repair locks and keys. That's an average of what we spend a year on, an average year, changing locks, doing, you know, changing doorknobs, changing whatever we have to change and then paint and, and supplies 7,500. So in the last couple of years, we've been painting hallways, classrooms, we just did the cafeteria in the middle school. We did the auditorium. We, we've got mostly everything inside done, caught up. And now next year, when this year coming, we're gonna do three classrooms in each building and then we're gonna start working on the outside soffits and all around the outside buildings because that needs to be done. We needed to get caught up on the inside first and now we need to get caught up on the outside. We also did the outside of Elm, the panels, we did that this year. Changed the color of the panels from that green to the brown to make the school look a little newer. And inside the four buildings, okay, we did the panels, the middle school cafeteria. So that's where we're going with the paint and stuff like that. So this year, we're gonna start on the outside, so that starts to look a little nicer. And then floor tile and adhesives repairs, that's normal every year. We haven't gone over it. The drapes, blinds and district wide inspections and stuff stay the same. We're caught up on blinds, but we have to start replacing the older ones now. The drapes are all good. We have them inspected every four years. Then we go to air filters for the unit vents. We're, we're pretty good with that because we have extra filters in stock that we bought this year. We've been testing them every month. We've been changing them. Actually, we just did Alden yesterday. We did the middle school, I think, a week and a half ago. As they need them, we've been changing them. We've been testing them every month. We have these little air flow testers that we've been using. Okay, glass replacement, that's natural, that's the same every year. Fasteners, hardware, that's the same. Gym floor maintenance, so this year, that's to resurface the gym floors. This year, we didn't do that because the floors didn't get used a lot, but we used that money to buy a lot of chemicals and stuff for the COVID, for disinfectant and stuff. So next year, we'll get back on track because the gyms weren't used the second half of last year or the first half of this year. So now we'll get back on track with that and that's gonna stay the same.
Mike, let me interrupt you a moment. Go back to glass replacement.
Okay.
You spend five, over $5,000 a year on glass replacement?
The windows at the big windows at the high school, I mean, the middle school and Elm, the bigger windows are $670 apiece to replace them.
But how often do they break?
They break, they break from all different reasons, maybe cutting, you know, something hits it or it gets hit with a ball. I mean, they break, we, we use the glass money every year, doors, the windows break on doors, somebody slams a door. We change the, the door glasses on the toilet, on the inside doors that go out, you know, the, the second set of doors. At the middle, they're like $250 apiece.
Alright, it's a lot.
I've shopped, I've shopped.
It's a lot of money on glass.
In two of our buildings, we have that old single pane glass of 1960. When, when we do get our capital project in and do a window replacement, you could bet Howard, you'll be seeing a lot less than that, in that repair line for sure.
Alright, thank you.
And that gym floor, you know, the fact that we use that money this year to pay for disinfectant and stuff, make sure, you know, again, I don't want to take, go backwards. So, you know, I'm assuming someplace else that the money that was taken out of the gym floor maintenance, you know, now it's back in gym floor maintenance, somewhere else, there's money for disinfectant.
Well, don't forget it wasn't just disinfectant that we bought for COVID, we bought temperature sensors, we bought thermometers, we bought, we bought ultraviolet light, we bought a lot of stuff this year that we didn't plan. You know, last year, we did the budget in January, who knew what was gonna happen?
Yeah, no, no, my point is that I'm glad we found the money. But now that we're not gonna use that, but we're also going to continue some of those practices, let's make sure that money is where it belongs.
Well, that money will be in my, at the end, in my, in the O500. Okay, okay, so expect district auditorium curtains, that's, that's the same every couple of years, that's the same, we do a different school each year, they get inspected every four years. So that's about the same price every year. It varies between like 2,200 and 2,300 depending on which building.
Hey, Mike, let me interrupt you there for a second. You said that the school, the, the curtains and the rigging at the auditoriums. So is this just an inspection or is this a fixing? What is this?
They, they check all the rigging and they have to refire proof them. They have to be done every four years. So I'm on a rotation, I got on a rotation because we used to do them all in over two years. Now I'm on a rotation with their company and we do one school a year. That's why that's down to 2,300.
Well, the, the one at the high school definitely needs to be looked at just because I was behind the scenes at some of the plays helping out. And some of those ropes are twisted, the curtains are ripped, you know, that's, those are pretty bad shape at the high school.
Yeah, well, that doesn't include changing them, that just includes making sure everything works and refire.
Oh, okay, okay.
And refire proofing it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, we can look at stuff like that.
Okay.
Okay, where are we? District, school dude is the same. Ceiling tile, we spend about $1,200 a year on ceiling tile for different reasons. Door replacement, Alden, this year, we did the one door number seven, which the safety team wanted to do last year. That was the door in the back of the Alden with the long window in it, we replaced that. And we're gonna replace the two boiler room doors at Alden and Elm. Those are the last two doors that had to replace over there. And then number 14, middle school carpet, next year, we're gonna start doing the middle school main office. We want to get that carpeted, so we put a little extra, we put a little more than we normally did for that because we needed to get that done this year. Okay? Let me do the, oh, and last year, what we did with the middle school was we did the auditor, this budget year now, we did the auditorium. I'm sorry. I'm going backwards. Okay, alright, and the next page, fire and safety. The fire extinguisher check is the same, the fire alarm maintenance and repairs, that's usually the same. The annual fire alarm monitoring is the same every year. The sprinkler inspection is the high school is the same every year. And that includes, it's about 900 and something dollars and that'll include any repairs that we have to do. And we haven't been over that yet. The annual fire system inspection gets done every year, all four buildings, that's what that costs. Now, the Alden fire alarm upgrade, the $9,000 for that, what we did was when Elm had the mold problem, while all the ceilings were down, we put a whole new fire alarm system in because it was the easiest way to do it. All the ceilings were down, walls were apart, everything was open, we had did that. And then what I did was, I talked to fail safe and had them give me a price and break it over three years. And I got some pricing from some other companies to break it over the three years. In June of the, of 1920 and then July of 2021, we did the first two stages. And now this year, we're gonna do the last stage of Alden and now we have a whole new upgraded fire alarm system and all the new panels. Everything is handicap accessible, all the, Elm, Alden used to have one or two smokeheads in a hallway. Now they have it every 30 feet like they're supposed to. In other words, they were grandfathered into the old system, now we have a whole new system. The part that's left for this year is the lasers across the all purpose room and a couple of other small things in the all purpose room and some of the hallways, everything else is done. So in July of this year, we'll have a whole brand new fire alarm system at Alden. And then we're gonna start to look at the middle school next because that's also on the, on the, the building. The building survey. So, alright, so that's where we are with the fire alarms. Okay, operations, uniform replacements, we buy everybody three uniforms a year. New people get seven, that's about the same, the mop contractor is the same every year. The shoes per person, that's the same every year. Mileage dues and workshops, that's about the same every year. We took some money from that this year to help out with other stuff because nobody went anywhere. But next year, hopefully that'll all go back to where it was. Okay. Then custodian service training, most of the training I get from my guys are free, very little of it, we have to pay for, so we kept that the same. I make, you know, we made some deals with some of the vendors we use and they come in and they do some classes and stuff like that. Sewage and water went down a little bit, I guess, from last year. I guess, you know, that I really don't have control over. Trash removal, and the trash removal includes recycled items. We spend about 4,000 a year for dump permits and going to the dump. And then we spend some money every year getting rid of old chemicals, we do that once a year in the summertime. We get rid of the old chemicals, so that includes all that plus the regular trash removal.
Mike, excuse me one second, my screen is blinking, are you guys seeing a consistent?
I am.
Or are you seeing the blink?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not seeing the blink.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then plumbing and heating. Next page. Okay, plumbing and heating, sinks, faucets, toilets, journals, 5,000. Clean the boilers, we do every August. Unit ventilator repair. That's about right because that doesn't include motors, that's everything but the motors, the motors is in a different line. Boiler maintenance, 4,000 is about right. The Vita root is done every September, inspected and any repairs that need to be made. The backflow for vendors are done every September. And two years ago in Alden, we had got a quote for $4,500 to change it. It was no good, it wouldn't pass, we changed it ourselves, it cost us $2,250. And this year, we had one at the high school for the fire tank feed that went bad and it wouldn't pass inspection and they wanted $4,500 to change that one and that one we paid $2,400 for and we did it in-house. So that came, okay, building controls and maintenance contract, 5,000, that stays the same. Refrigeration and AC repair, we haven't gone over that. And water fountain replacement, we haven't done one this year, they're $980 each. I haven't done one this year yet because I can't get them. Nobody, everybody's blaming COVID, so hopefully by May, I can get one. And then we're gonna put one in the middle school and we're gonna put another one in Alden. Those are the next two to be done, so one would be for this year, the one for Alden was supposed to be this year. And then we're gonna do one in the middle school for 21, 22. So asbestos training went down a little bit because it's only me, me and my assistant that do that. We don't do have everybody else do it because it, you only need two people to do it. So we knocked that down to save some money and me and John will take care of that. Facilities, equipment and repair. We have 1,500 to repair all the floor machines, the wheel lift, 1,500 a year, which should be good. Roof fans, 3,500, we check them every few months. Except for in the winter, in the winter, we can only fix what goes bad because we can't go on the roofs when they're frozen because that makes more roof leaks. So we only go on there when we have to, but we check the motors, belts, a couple of times a year, it's in our preventative maintenance plan, you'll see it. The high school elevator contract is 3,500 a year. And all the district kilns get inspected every July. And that hasn't gone over that yet, it's been, it was 950 last year. So we're good with that. Okay. And then we go to 468. Okay, so infield dressing, which is for the baseball and softball fields at the high school, we buy some of that. At the high school, we buy some of that every year to fill in. Even last year, we bought some, we ended up buying it in the middle of the year, because we needed it, I mean, this year. Um, playground mulching, we didn't get this year, because nobody was in the playground, so we used that money for other things, some of it. But now this year, we're gonna go back and I'm sure the kids are gonna be using the playgrounds again, we're gonna be bu- going back to that. Grass seed and fertilizer is to do all the repairs from winter plowing and everything else we have to do. Ice melt. We, we have enough, this year, we had a lot more snow than we planned on, I mean, you know, so, so far, we're still good. We're gonna just see what happens, we still have half a pallet left, so we only use that for the sidewalks. And we keep buckets of it in the, in the doorways, so when it's snowing, and if there's kids in the building or whatever, we can keep the doorways clear. And then we use our regular sanders with the sand and salt that we get for the town for most of the sidewalks and all the roads and stuff, so the ice melt. Is basically for the doors to, you know, do while it's snowing or whenever, whenever it needs to be done. Okay, where do we go? Field marking paint, we still buy every year, we do different things with it. The wash control for all the buildings is about the same every year. Fence repair and replacement, we've spent that money every year, we put some gates in at Alden for the kids to play in the back, um. The safety committee wanted some gates in the back, so they could stop the cars from driving in the back where the circle is. And, uh, we did some gates at Alden, I mean, at Elm, you know that. One in the front and one in the back to stop the cars from going up and down the driveway. Winter rise the sprinkler system, now that's to open and, that's to close it up in the winter and winterize it, and that also includes. Opening up and getting pressurizing it and getting it ready in the spring, and we haven't gone over that yet. Ornamental plantings, we won't be doing until, you know, May or June, whatever, but we do, we spend some money on that. District wide signage, that's. You know, traffic patterns, different signs for whatever we need, whatever changes year to year, this year, we changed. The direction at all, then, you know, we change different things every year, so five hundred dollars really isn't a lot of money, but we've been getting it done. So turf testing and deep grooming, that's for repairs, check it to buy black balls when we need it to, to, um. Fill in and also impact testing. Various blacktop and maintenance pavement and markings, so this year, what we did was instead of doing the lines. We had a, um, we had a, uh, company come in and do all four schools, this way, they'll last a lot longer. And they're a lot sharper and a lot nicer, and I think every, I think everybody likes it a lot better, they're a lot easier to see. So we did all four schools this year, and the blacktop, as far as blacktop, that we usually wait until after the winter's over. Like, in the middle school parking lot, we have some lifting in the parking lot from the ground, from the ice and everything. And we'll do our repairs after everything thaws out, and so we usually spend that money like in May or June. Last year, we had some sewers that stuck up, we had to have them cut out, and we had a sidewalk that had to be repaired. This year, I don't know yet, because everything's been covered under snow for the last month or so. Alright.
Hey, hey, Mike, Mike, one other question, the, uh, the blacktop, the, um. The basketball court slash the old tennis court at the middle school. How often or do you have to, um, seal that, like a regular driveway, cuz it is blacktop?
So, it still looks brand new, I don't sand that at all, because that's in the sun. We plow that, but we don't, I won't put sand on it, because the sand and salt is really what does all the damage. So we don't sand and salt that, because that's in the sun all day long, and if that, we plow that in the morning. Even if it's ten degrees out, as long as the sun is out, that'll dry up.
Okay.
Oh, that's actually, I just plowed that this morning myself, that still looks brand new, we haven't sealed it. That's something that I don't think we're gonna have to get to for a while, because once you do that, then you gotta do it all the time, there's no cracks in it, there's no, that's. Still like brand new, like I don't sand any of the, uh, playgrounds, I try to, because that's what does all the damage.
Mike, just to, to clarify, so all these line items, they don't include our, our internal resource, like. You know, uh, playground mulching is, I don't know, twenty hours of one of the maintenance guys at whatever they get per hour.
Right.
That's not in here, this, these are just like equipment and stuff, yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is just about the material, we do it, we do most of that ourselves, and I'm trying to get, I, I mean. I feel like the more we can do ourselves, the more control we have, because. I just, I, I like doing everything, and then you know how it's done, so, alright, electrical repair. Motors for unit vents and exhaust fans, so this year, we thought we were gonna use more motors, but as of last week. We're still the same amount of motors that we bought last year, so we're still pretty good, even with the, uh. The Merv eleven filters, everything seems to be okay, and I wanna say burning out at the same time. We haven't gotten ahead of ourselves this year yet, so we're still pretty good, light bulbs, we spend three thousand a year on light bulbs. We buy four boxes at a time, so we spend that money. Emergency light inspections and repairs, hasn't gone over that, it's like twenty two hundred dollars to have it done, plus the parts and material and labor. And we do that two times a year, we do it in September, and he's actually coming the first week of March, we do it in September and March every year. And exterior building lighting, we've changed a few of those, um. LED packets, and they're expensive, the, uh, light fixture, the, the light panel itself, they're expensive. So that's not really a lot of money for that, that's what we've been spending every year.
Mike, if you don't mind, uh, since we're talking about electrical repair, I'm just gonna share with the board. Uh, your appointment that you have on Thursday, so we were alerted, um, by Central Hudson. That there is an up to eighty five percent, uh, some of you have been around for a while, you might remember, we did the exterior lighting. Uh, and we actually got ninety percent of it paid for, uh, by incentives. So they have another incentive, uh, we have an appointment with Lime Electric, who is, uh, uh, Sen Hud's, uh, subcontractor. They're gonna come in and, and do some version of an evaluation, just to let us know what we would be eligible for, so you'll be hearing more from us. Um, and, and, uh, we'll be talking about it at the, uh, facilities committee as well. Uh, but we, we didn't wanna lose an opportunity to get them on site to see if we can, uh, uh, save taxpayers, uh, up to eighty five percent of. Of what the cost is, so, so more to follow, but we wanted to make sure you knew about it.
Okay, so now we go to four sixty eight fuel oil, so fuel oil. Is, w- we used less last year than the year before, so we knocked some off of that. Hopefully, we're gonna use less this year, and hopefully, the price is gonna stay, we're watching the price, all of a sudden. The prices are starting to go up, in the last few months, they went up a lot. Uh, propane gas is to, for each building, for the pilots and all the boilers. It's used in the science rooms of the middle school and the high school, and it's also used to ma- to heat the maintenance garage. So that's the number for that, that's been about the same every year.
Mike, I'm gonna chime in on fuel oil, just so the.
Sure.
Understand, so when we started budgeting in December and January, we, we decided that we were going to go. From what was originally budgeted as a two fifty five or two fifty per gallon, down to two thirty five. Because we've been building fund balance and, and felt like it was money that we didn't need to raise. Um, and ask our taxpayers for, so we did go down the full twenty or twenty five, uh, uh, twenty five or, or twenty cents on the, uh. Uh, per gallon, however, um, you know where we're going with, uh, fuel oil, you've gotten drops yourself at home, perhaps. You see where gasoline is going, in the final budget, you may see that this has moved back up to two fifty. As we continue to analyze and, and, and keep a close eye on that, but we wanted to be, um, as optimistic as possible on that two thirty five. But we may have to grab every bit of that twenty, twenty thousand additional, uh, and put it back in the budget, but, but. Um, so don't be surprised if you see it back in there.
Okay, so electricity. I, you know, it's for the buildings, the athletic feel on the school sign, telephone. Changed, I guess that went up, that I don't, I, I don't have any control over.
Yeah, and some of that will be for our hotspots too.
Yeah.
We have like a fifteen hundred dollar, uh, difference, um, and, uh, and we have our, uh, effects in there as well.
Okay, now, custodial supplies and materials, thirty one thousand, we've been pretty good with that, we've been. We've changed some of the chemicals that we use, some of them cost the same, some of them cost a little more, but we're gonna stay on that aggressive. You know, like, we're not just adding chemicals to disinfect, we've changed some of the chemicals that we use. So some of it'll be just buying different chemicals, um, the wax and stripper, we spend about five thousand a year. The chemicals, hopefully, we're gonna spend the same money, the four thousand, trash bags. Paper products, all that should basically stay the same, once we go back to full-time school. And the mops, sprayers, and all that, that stays the same. So any questions on the supplies? You were talking before, I mean, we're gonna stay on the same aggressive thing, but like I said, we're just replacing some stuff with different. It's not like we're just buying extra. Okay, four seventy one. Okay, maintenance gas, that's the same as the oil, I mean, we. We backed down a little bit, because we don't use a lot of gallons, but now that we knocked that down. Price of gas is going up, so that may be the same thing, we're keeping an eye on that and see what happens with gasoline, that may have to change a little bit. The diesel, we use about six hundred gallons, six hundred and ten gallons a year, we use that, we pi- we use that for our tractors. And for the, some of the lawn mowers use diesel fuel. Means, the BOSI's shared services, we use that every year for, you know, jobs like. We have them go through some of the roof fans, we have them, they just did some sheetwalk work for us to do some offices and stuff. We use them all year long for electrical problems, for all different kinds of things that we can't do in-house, and we have them come in, it's like calling a contractor in. Maintenance supplies, hand tools, we use the same money every year. And then we have s- security. Replacement batteries and services, twenty five hundred, the monitoring, the four schools is seventeen hundred, and the winter alert system is fourteen hundred. We took some money out of the, uh, safety team, the new initiatives, because we found that we could take some of that. Like we have, if we need to use some of the money from like fencing or whatever, if we had to, we can. And this year is a tight budget year, so we had to give some money back somewhere, so we just, everything that the safety team has asked for. Last year, we've done already, and there's no new needs yet, so we're kinda letting that. Try to save some money there, and if we have to do something, we can get it from somewhere else, so we took out ten thousand for that, because it's a tighter budget year.
Hey, Mike, is the, under the monitoring, is that also the vape systems?
The what?
The vape systems. You know, the sensors, checking those, make sure they work.
I don't. That, do, I don't know.
That's out of, uh, BOSI's code, so no.
Yeah, that's out of a BOSI's.
Oh, so BOSI's does all the work on the vaping system?
No, they, we, uh, we are part of their co-sir. Cuz remember, we made that commitment to use BOSI's whenever we can to get the aid back on the other side, so. Um, we belong to their co-sir and, uh, and we purchase our, um, uh, maintenance contracts through them.
So who actually sets that schedule, is it BOSI's or you, Mike?
We do, we do, we'll, we'll change them, we check them every year. Okay, so now. So, over the years, so we've transitioned from struggling to stay afloat, to increasing our capacity to be more proactive. And we're focused on fixing things the right way, instead of just bandaging and everything. And we're trying to, that's what we're trying to do at Elm, we're trying to do that everywhere, so this budget allow us to do that. And like I told Brian, we're starting to see light at the end of the tunnel, we can get some more stuff done. The more we do, the more we can get done, and we can make everything a little better, anybody got any questions?
Now, I, for, for, personally, I, I thank you guys for, you know, taking the. Taking the, uh, challenge of, of staying on the maintenance, you know, making sure that you've got. A, you know, a, a regular schedule for maintaining, especially the more expensive things. Um, it's one of the things that we're gonna be poking Elliot about on technology as well, make sure we're doing upgrades, make sure we're buying. You know, paying, so, you know, if it, if it's not something you do in your house, we don't do it in the buildings. And, and really, I wanna challenge the principals to take, you know, more and more ownership of their campuses. And, and, you know, if they have something that they don't like, make sure that it's, it's being addressed, so. But anyway, uh, anything from the board, any of the board members?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, the only thing, just if you could, just, now that I think about it more and more, when I used to go up and help out with the plays. Just in the back there, those curtains, I just remember those curtain and the ropes and stuff being very tangled, and I think the one curtain is very ripped, so.
That we, that we could take care of, and one of them, we had sewed, when was this?
Well, that's what I mean, like, it was what, two, three, two, three years ago, you may have already done it.
Back curtain, the back curtain on the.
Yeah, on the right, if you're looking at the stage right side.
We had that sewed, we had that sewed, and the twisting of everything, that's the bottom piece swings around. What they did was they disconnected them at the last play, and we can just screw them back to the floor.
Yeah, with the rope, yeah, the ropes were all twisted and knotted and stuff, okay.
They said it was easier to use it like that, and it really, I don't think it was, but.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm sure Mr. Dunning uses it when he does the plate, you know, when he goes back on stage, you know, to close the curtains and stuff, so they just gotta make sure they're all working.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Alright, why don't we move on to the food services report, or presentation, sorry.
Hello there, um, after we met, uh, with the subcommittee and, um. Came up with a plan for present, presenting on, um, food service. We, um, decided that we would move forward with the budget piece first, since there seems to be a lot of question around that, and, um, so we wanted to. Focus on that, and so this is what we're bringing tonight. Brian. So, since the beginning of, uh, school lunch. The, since its inception, the main goals of school lunch, um, are to provide a nutritional. A nutritionally balanced, low-cost or free meal to school-aged children. Um, it's used to bolster the economy and the agricultural sector by using federal funds to purchase. Um, surplus foods or commodities, same thing, um, from farmers. And, and, and it employs thousands of people to prepare, cook and serve meals to hungry students. I think, um, Amelin Rude from Time said it really well, when she said that we can surely all agree on the importance, importance of its origin. Um, a means to make sure children are well-fed and healthy, so they can grow and learn and better the nation. And I think today, that still stands true. Almost, Brian. So in this last year, since March of last year, um. Milbrook has run under three different meal programs. Um, and that's to accommodate state requirements and our students. So first, from September to March, middle of March of last year. We used our, the National School Lunch Breakfast Program, which is what we normally function under. Um, in March, we had to have, uh, S E D approval of an application. In urgent, in urgent manner, um, to allow us to begin. Emergency service, which included, um, meals for holidays, weekends, home delivery. Um, and it allowed all students to receive meals, um, at no cost. The caveat was, with that program was that we did have to, um, utilize our free and reduced list first. To, uh, determine whether there was a need, um, and. To, uh, determine whether there was a need, um, and to see how many of the families that were. On our free and reduced, um, eligibility list. Needed that assistance. When the need was. Realized, then we moved forward with the program from March until. Well, the end of the school, June thirtieth. And then, uh, we made the decision, and the board approved it, to, um. Begin a summer food service program. So that allowed for meal pickup, um, off-site service and consumption, free meals to children eighteen and under. And it didn't have programming requirements. That are normally mandated for a summer food service program in a, in a non-need-based area. Uh, like Milbrook. Normally, there has to be some kind of, um, academic or, um, activity. Where the children stay on site and, and just consume their meals there. That's it. So we, we proudly serve meals to hundreds of Milbrook students each day. Um, and this is a chart of our student participa- first, student participation daily. Back to two thousand seventeen, and you can see, um, from the chart that we were on the incline. Two thousand nineteen, twenty, we were on, uh. A path to probably hit around forty-seven percent, and then we, then COVID came. So. Uh, it ju- it dropped our, um, daily participation. Down to thirty-seven percent, but it did increase significantly our breakfast pre- uh, participation, because all students that. Um, received meals at home would receive both. Um, that was part of. Of the, the law that was passed. And then in, um, from September to December of this year, uh, we're, we're in an around the twenty-nine, thirty-three percent range. Also. So. From the chart before, you can see that we are, our, our participation is increasing, but our student enrollment continues to decrease. Um, and our free, and our free and reduced eligibility trends upward. So, as you can see, in seventeen, eighteen, we're at nineteen percent. At twen- two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we're at twenty-five percent. In two thousand nineteen, twenty, we, we look like we dropped, but then again, that was the COVID. Area, and pretty much all of that free and reduced meal processing and applications just stopped. Both at the school level and at the state level, um, and many of the families. Automatically qualified for meals, so they didn't need to apply. Now, this year. Again, we, we are collecting applications for those that are submitting them, and they're being processed, um, by me. But the vast majority of the number twenty-five percent is. An import directly from the Department of Social Services, so our area increased back up to the twenty-five percent. And that number is just through, um, February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we, Elliot and I need to work together to pull the next import, and then there'll be one more import from Social Services in April. Um, so we could see a significantly higher number, or it could stay in and around where it is. I expect to see some, what have an increase, um, from recertifications. But I don't want to say how much just yet. So. This is a. Kind of a planning log that, that we use when we're, um, preparing the budget and. For school lunch, and then monitoring it throughout the year. We close our school year for the, for the one that we're operating in, and we receive our external audit, where they finalize the revenues and expenses from the, from the previous year. Um, at that point, Brian and I meet, um, we review the budget codes from the previous year or years, um, often. Um, at that time, uh, we project our expenses by code. We also project our revenues. We meet weekly in the business office, and we review the profit and loss monthly. So. We felt like it was important, uh, as the sub-company met, um, to try to. Put some consideration on what variables and what things we have to use to estimate our expenses and our revenues. And some of those items that are used in estimating expense would be, um, the bid documents, which are new each year. What entitlement dollars we are gonna receive, that's, um, monies that we can spend on our government surplus foods. Or commodities. Uh, payroll calculations, our food costs. Which fluctuates based on bids. Um, and average daily participation, you know, if we're feeding more students, we need more food. For feeding less students, we need less food, so that'll, that'll fluctuate. Meals per labor hour, how many, how many meals are we feeding per labor hour, and inventory? And then in revenues, um, we're estimating, based on our average daily participation. Our federal and state, uh, reimbursement rates, our percentage of change in à la carte donations, also entitlement dollars. Because they are a revenue and an expense. And inventory that's on hand, which is, which is considered an asset. That's it, Brian? So some of those variables are, um, what's called a bid pricing escalator. Um, all, most bids go out to, uh, vendors in the area or wherever, um. The, the cooperative bidding group from BOSI's decides they want to send them. But many of them go out with what's called an escalator, so it, if the manufacturer increases the price of a product. It doesn't lock the vendor into the bid for the full ten months or twelve months, as, um, some schools do. Um, it allows them to escalate the price, once it reaches a certain percentage over. Where they originally bid. That way they don't lose an exorbitant amount of money on a particular item, and we can still receive it if we, um, choose to stay with it. Uh, percentage of change in prices of item from year to year. Market prices that change the value of government surplus foods, so, um. We order, I order food, I'm ordering food now, uh, my government food now, for next year. And when I'm ordering, there's one value price that I'm utilizing to order chicken, cheese. But over the course of the timeframe from now until next June, the value of that product, that same product can go up or down. Throughout the year, so each month when I receive my product, I have to take a calculation on. That actual product that was received, and the total number of pounds or cases that I received in it. And what that'll allow me to utilize if, if it's a processed item. Um, waste, staffing changes, student and adult participation. Uh, the number of days of service per month. Product availability, inventory again, and meal pattern requirements. In, in this example, um, since Milbrook worked in three different programs. The meal pattern requirements changed three times over the course of this year. So when we're packing meals, we packed them three different ways, as the meal, as the program changed. Because the requirements were different for each. So, um, revenue from federal aid is here, um, and also on an incline. Again, you'll see in the twenty-twenty-one school year, um, when COVID hit, uh, we were. It, it changed our, our. Our course. We didn't do a calculation, and, and we could certainly do that if you're interested in, in an anticipated. calculation for. Wh- where we may have been, um, had we continued on a forty percent, a forty-seven percent, uh. Average daily participation, but as you can see, changing to the summer food service program, um, because of your approval to allow us to go forward with it. The revenue for federal and state aid significantly increases, and the requirements to prepare. A sup- the summer food service program is, are, are significantly less. So it's not like they get less, but you don't have to meet the same vegetable subgroup comm- categories, for example. No, there's no caloric. It's just based on the components of the meal. Um, so this is a projection of where we'll be at in June in our federal aid for breakfast and for lunch. Based on the actual numbers we've already received through December, and the number of meals we're currently serving.
So Holly, if you don't mind, I'd like to chime in here. So Holly and her staff have pivoted, uh, three different times. Uh, or two different times to, to be able to be in three different programs. And as a result, we have been in a position where we are now able to get in, uh. Two and a half times as much revenue just on lunch from our federal aid. As a result of being in the programs that we're, that, that we are now in, and if, and, and again, probably, uh, you know, uh, two and a, uh. A third times the amount of, uh, of breakfast revenue. So you'll see even in the profit and loss through December in the, um. Financials that you'll approve a little bit later, you'll notice, um, that for the first time, uh, in I don't know how long. We are actually in the red with inventory, uh, in the black.
In the black.
Right, yes, I might be so used to saying that.
Hello.
With inventory, uh, being taken into account in, in this year, so we, uh, Holly and her crew are currently in the process of eating into, uh, last year's deficit. Um, uh, so it, it, it's a great story. Um, it, it's one of the silver linings of COVID, but make no mistake about it. Uh, it's all due to the fact that, uh, they're hustling down there and pivoting from, uh, from, uh. Program to program to, uh, to get us in a good spot, so definitely a, a great story, and, and. This is a projection of where we're going to be based on the actuals, uh, that are complete through December, because we've actually received our, uh, federal aid, um, through December. Thanks for letting me interject, Holly.
So, um, this is our state aid, also on an incline. You'll see that state aid for the current year is fairly significant. Um, and it's a projection based on claims that have been submitted. Unfortunately, the state has to approve their budget, and as part of that. Um, we'll only be paid state aid if there's money left to do so. In the state budget. So this is the projection. We, I've submitted through December, um, on the projection. Uh, but to, to date, we have not received state funds, so it'll, it'll be contingent upon them passing their budget and having money. In their budget to do, to pay school lunch. On their state aid. So we may or may not see that. Depending on what the state does.
Brian, what, what, um, what category does that aid come in, in, under?
Uh, on the profit-loss, Mr. Rudy?
Uh, the state aid that, that comes to us, what?
I'm, I'm not sure.
When the state comes out with the pro- bu- uh, projections in January. What, is this food, food aid part of that, or it's, it's separate?
No, that's separate.
Yeah, it's not part of our state aid runs.
Okay, okay. What is it, you say, qual, does it have a name to it?
The, the food aid?
Yeah.
Um, it's, well, it's, it's commodities or, or federal surplus foods, and it's, on this current year, it's about thirty-seven cents.
Thank you.
But that comes as food, not cash. So these are the expenditures, um, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, twenty. And you can see that, um, they're also somewhat on an incline. Um, payroll is definitely increasing, um, benefits have increased and then leveled some. Um, food cost was, was increasing, our biggest year being two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and then, um, came down a little bit in nineteen, twenty. There is a, there is a reason for the increase in eighteen, nineteen, um, and that's because, um. Duchess BOSI's made a decision not to go out to competitive bid, but to, um, utilize what's known as an IPA. Uh, for purchasing, and there was. Some discussion around it. And they moved forward with it. But in December, Child Nutrition mandated that they go out to bid, so for the first four months of eighteen, nineteen, we were working on this IPA that, uh. We got all of our food from one vendor. They were our only contract. And pretty much they could charge whatever they cared to charge, and oftentimes didn't have our commodity items, so we were. We were struggling there a bit for that, for that year, and, uh, finally, um. Child Nutrition said they had to do it, and we, we started realizing the bid in mid-December of eighteen, nineteen. And then supplies on, on a.
Is there a reason, um, the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, um, I'll call them actuals? I know it would only be a partial year, but, um, do we not have those yet?
Yeah, we have, we have through December. You can certainly get those free.
No, I was just wondering why they weren't sort of on this chart.
Sure. I, I looked at that myself, and I was kind of surprised that it ended at nineteen, nineteen, twenty.
I mean, one of the things that would make it a lot easier is to see, you know, on an ongoing basis. Here's our expenditures, here's the revenue we received, here was our plan, you know, and, and be able to see plan versus actual for both. All on the same, same chart that says, you know, here's the amount we're spending on it. Here's the amount we got on it, here's what we thought we would get on it. And, and then be able to see, are we trending, you know, if we're, here we are in February. Are we, you know, trending good, trending bad, because even, even, uh, you know, where we make some money. That variability every year is just, it, it, you know, well, it's gotta drive you guys nuts. But, you know, it drives us nuts every year when we're not sure. What the message is gonna be, we kind of just sit and cross our fingers and hope for the best.
Are you looking to have it charted? Because you get a profit-loss, and all of that's already there.
No, I think, just to have it so that, I don't know, uh, as we're going through the school year, we can see expenditures.
In this format?
Revenue, you know, month, let's say month by month, and then with a plan line on there that says. Yeah, I was planning on two hundred thousand dollars a month in revenue. I'm spend, I'm, I, I've only received a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this month. Uh, I'm spending, you know, two hundred and ten thousand dollars a month, and be able to see those things as the year progresses. But we can come back around to that.
Did my screen change, or do you see? Did my screen change or do you see the profit and loss on the screen?
No.
Oh, you're still, okay, all right.
Let me follow up on what Perry said. If, I don't want to lose my train of thought. If you meet every month or you, on this, then actually we should, in the past, like the reason for board oversight, especially now, is because of what the last year was, ended in March, last school year, the nineteen, 2020. And the overage of the, over budgeting that you were, over expenditure, I should say, of the budget for the food services. And if you were meeting every month, then, then red flag should have shown and you should have then either come to the board and said, listen, we're running way, way over budget and whatnot. And I think what Perry wants now is if you are meeting monthly, then all we need is some kind of a, either a graph or an update on where you're at and why, instead of, you know, instead of waiting for whole quarters to pass or half years to pass.
Yeah, and it can be, you know, there can be backup charts, but, you know, here's what I'm spending. Here's what I thought I would have as revenue. Here's what I have as revenue. And, you know, here's what I was planning to spend as an expenditure. So you have plan versus actual month by month. So we can say, hey, look, the thing's off the rails already. Is there anything we can do? If there isn't anything we can do, at least we know about it, you know, months before it comes to us with a, would you guys mind if we transferred money from here to there?
So this, so this is great conversation and thank you. So this is what we do provide monthly. This is what Holly and I review together and then you guys get in terms of your oversight. So here, this is the profit loss statement. So you're able to, I'm sure it'll look familiar. So it has all of the sales, it has all of the food purchases, it has all of our expenditures, and then it has all of our revenues. And then you're able to see the net loss and gain and then the net loss and gain after we take commodities into account. And this is something that we provide in the board packet every, each month. So if it would be helpful, we can think about reviewing this. In, you know, oftentimes you'll get your first and your second and maybe in discussion, we can review it because I think everything that you were asking for, it may be here and maybe not. Or if there's another mechanism to provide the information, Mr. Shapiro, Mr. Rudy and Holly and I can sit down at our next subcommittee meeting and decide maybe a better way that, that the information could be provided.
Yeah, to me, to me, this is backup information. What we should be able to see, you know, in, in, say, oh, let's say, October, is, you know, in July, we were expecting to receive $300,000 in aid. We were expecting, in other words, this is our plan for the year. This is what we planned on getting. This is what we planned on spending. And here's what we actually got. Here's what we actually spent. And then next to that is August and September and October and they're cumulative. So we can see, you know, without going through this, because this, you're right, this tells us the revenue and loss.
Explanation. It doesn't explain the plan.
Well, the thing about the plan is that the plan, there is a plan, but I think it changes. But Holly elaborated on a bunch of different variables that happen and you have to adjust.
You have to have some, when you build a budget, you have to have some kind of a plan.
Yes, yes.
I mean, and that plan can't just be, well, we spent $2,000 last year, so I think we'll spend $2,100 next year.
But the plan can't remain the same if other factors are changing on you.
Well, those are the actuals. The plan is your plan. That's what you set your budget on. You set, in July, you said, I need $2.2 million for food services. That's a plan that says, you know, I'm going to get this much revenue in. Now, when the actuals are coming in and they're not spending what they thought or something changed and they're not getting what they planned, those, those, well, wherever they just went, those, the backup numbers can be used to say, look, we were, we were expecting this and then the state just bailed on our, on the budget and we didn't get any money. Okay, now we get, now is there something we can do? Is there something we need to do right now to get that back on track?
So it's how to map this, plus the changes that happen across the year. Somehow explain that without having
Exactly. Yeah, and I think those are, you know, this is what, like I said, you built a plan at the beginning of the year that tells you, here's my budget. Now, the actuals throughout the year are all over the place, probably. But there had to be something that went into a plan. And then, you know, oh, well, the state had a new process and we did whatever we did and it came in better. And then the next month, oh, it came in worse because the state, you know, told us to take a hike on our, on our state aid. Whatever it is, be able to see, here's the plan we started so that at the end of the year, we're not saying, wait, we're 50 grand over? What happened? I don't understand. We should have seen, oh, we're five grand over. Why? Because we're 10 grand over.
Use the example of Bosi. So you have a plan and then a person makes a decision and it's costing you money. You're losing money. You don't know when it's going to stop.
But you still don't, you don't change your budget, right?
You have the plan going to the year, but things change on you and now, now it's, there are costs that you didn't expect.
Yeah, and those are your actuals. Those, those should be mapped against the plan. I mean, there's a plan. It's not like we don't, we don't come in every month and we update Holly's budget.
Yeah.
Say, oh, you had a change. Well, here's another 50 grand.
That all can be represented. The issue is how do you explain, how do you explain the different changes?
Yeah, and I think that's where, if we can, like, simplify that thing that Brian had up there, which is like, here's all the pluses and minuses. We can, you know, the major changes. So we're not going through, you know, an entire spreadsheet worth of stuff every month. But look, the state changed this process. It cost me 25. You see the 25 on the chart? That's why we're not on plan. I think if we can get more towards that, so the board is just aware of what's happening through the year and how it's affecting the long-term view, which is, you know, the only thing we do as a board is establish or approve that budget, that $2 million budget. After that, it's, you know, we're just sitting, hopefully overseeing what's happening. Are we, you know, we're five grand off, oh, we're 10 grand under. You know, if we can do that and then have the explanation of, you know, the major explanation. Oh, the price of pencils went up by three cents. We don't care. But if it's, you know, we suddenly can't get food from the feds or we didn't get our state aid or whatever, that should be really clear to us as it happens against the plan. But again, that's my, my take. I mean, I, I can't follow a monthly thing because it doesn't tell me, well, am I good or not?
Mapped from the start of the year, I agree with that.
No, Perry, you're right. We need explanations. Basically, you know, it's great. You got all these great numbers up there. But again, they really don't mean anything to us without explanations about some, some insight is actually a better word, of what's going on behind the scenes that's causing these numbers to go upward now.
And when you build a budget at the beginning of the year that you know is going to be a variable budget, you got to sit down and say, well, I put in $2,800 for this. I put in $10,000 for that. I'm assuming I'm going to get $50,000 for this. So here's my budget. So now you take that line and you put it across the chart and you just say, here's what happened this month. Here's what happened the next month, the next month. And we can see, are we, are we overshooting it? Are we, you know, are we on plan? Are we off plan? I mean, that, to me, it should be, I think you have all the information. It's a matter of how do you present it? And how do you, how do you really have a plan?
We'll do some discussion on this and try to figure out how to do that.
Okay. Sorry, Holly, are you still with us?
I am. These are some of the things that where there was an action and we had to react. Reducing enrollment. Our response was to maximize program options, revenue in other ways, breakfast in the, such as breakfast in the classroom, catering, adult lunch program, pie sales, aleckhart breakfast at the high school. An increase, an increase in minimum wage. Totally out of our hands. 2019, there was a 6% increase. In 2020, there was another 6% increase. It's caused a host of morale issues for food service. We have five staff members currently working who are going to be paid the same salary as a person that we hire tomorrow and has no, no knowledge of food service or school food service or any kind of knowledge about working the way we have been working. And it's, and it's extremely physically demanding on all of us. We're moving hundreds and hundreds of pounds a day to get these meals out and relocated to different buildings. And we don't have enough storage at the middle school, so milk goes to the high school and we're moving it back and forth. So it's, it's a lot on everyone. The staffing reduction concurrent with enrollment. And then there's shortages to staffing. Today, we worked at the middle school. There was two of us and myself putting out meals for almost 300 students. Increased administrative mandates, staff training requirements, nutritional analysis of every product we serve. And then those nutritional analysis are then calculated to make menus. All of that's done manually. I take a nutrition label off a can. I do a nutrition analysis on that product. I break it down to the serving size. I figure out the calories, fat, vitamin A, C, saturated fat, and then I have to work it back up into the recipe for each, each child's meal. Then there's a weighted average. So that meets our caloric requirements and I have to make sure that so that we get our state and federal reimbursement at all. Student participation, maintaining an interest in, in buying school lunch, increasing quality and their options. Procurement of product, maximize federal surplus foods whenever possible. That's our commodities. And cooperative bidding. And being very specific in our, in our specs so that if we're asking for an 80/20 hamburger, that that's what's being bid because that then changes all of the nutritionals. And then I recalculate all of that, as does just changing manufacturers. If there's an added something to a nutrition label, that then could change the nutritionals entirely and it's a recalculation. And if that happens mid-year, really throws a loop in it. Mandated menu plan changes. Working with manufacturers and vendors and creation and planning of items students will find acceptable while being within the guidelines.
So is our student participation or whatever the right thing is, is that pretty consistent with other districts in the area? It seemed, it seemed like, I don't remember the numbers, but it was like in the maybe low 30s.
Well, we were actually at 45% in 2018, 19. In 1920, we were on a track of 47%, which is almost half of our student enrollment in lunch. That number also qualifies us for reimbursement at a severe need rate for breakfast. And then COVID hit, so it dropped us back down to in the 33, but that's still a third of our students.
But is that good or is that, I mean, like, what do other districts?
I can, I can definitely calculate better if I go on to a child nutrition website and I can see what other districts in our area and anywhere in the state, actually, what their percentage is, but we're in a good spot.
I just, I mean, if it's, it would seem like it would make it life easier on you if you knew, you know, more kids were participating. But I, and I don't know why they're not or, you know, what the reasoning is, but I'm just curious as to how we sort of stack up against other districts in the, in Dutchess County or whatever.
Sure, you can look that up.
So Holly, can I ask you a quick question? So you've got these people who really, you mentioned their salary and everything and they might be with us for months or years. And you're telling me there's no difference between a person that's in the cafeteria position who works for us for a number of years as opposed to someone just coming in tomorrow if you were to hire me?
Not once, not once the minimum wage went up to 1250. It equal, it brought them up because they were not working at 1250. They were working at a contractual, well, a contractual rate. So they, the people that are there currently went up 6% in 19 and then another 6% in 2020. So they're all on the same plane and then the person that comes to work tomorrow is going to make that same, that same minimum wage.
And, well, that's something that I think we need to look at, but that's, you know.
I agree, Paul.
I just think, I got to tell you something. Listen to me. You're working at school and I work in a school and you see the kids, they wouldn't be getting this stuff. And then we had this COVID thing where these same people are running crazy and getting stuff out to the families. I know they appreciate it. It just, I, I, I don't know, something should be done, especially this year, but. And in addition to that, we're having them move milk and stuff. Why do we not have enough refrigeration in one location? We got to store it someplace else? People are running back and forth with, with like milk? Is that what's happening?
Yeah, but in fairness, I mean, we, we're getting milk because we're packing meals today. Well, tomorrow we're packing meals to go out on Friday for the weekend.
I understand.
So I'm always, I always have to have milk ahead. You know, so I'm storing and then by the time we pack meals, we're packing two days at a time.
Oh, I got you. I thought it was because you had a lack of refrigeration in one place and not the other. That should be balanced too. You shouldn't have, you know, I know that some, some school could be bigger than the other, but you shouldn't be, if you need a refrigerator, we should know about that. That's one of the things that we need to look at. And Howard, thank you for echoing, but I think we should really look at kind of how hard these people work. And I know you guys do too.
All right. Brian and Holly, you could, you could try to, I know this would increase, but, and, you know, the budget and everything. But you should look at staffing and try to come up with some way of where, where the people that have been with us get some kind of a salary increase. So they go up certain, you know, they go up more than they just, if they're up a quarter more an hour and all of a sudden the minimum wage goes up, everybody's the same. They have to keep, keep pace. There has to be some way to reward the people that have been with us and have really been working hard.
I have a question. I don't know if it, it goes into the, into the category, I guess, for preparing, preparing, monitoring school lunch budget. How much, you know, I, I know that you guys are sending food out on the weekends, Holly and stuff, for the families and how much is it? I mean, does, does every family get it? I guess is, are the, how much is wasted? I think is what it comes down to. Like, how much doesn't go to the families? You know, I know, I've seen a lot of postings on the social I think is what it comes down to. Like, how much doesn't go to the families? You know, I know I've seen a lot of postings on the social media about you know, go, it's, there, there, there's always something being posted about, you know, the weekend meals and I appreciate it. I mean, I, I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing. But I also wonder, like, you know, on the weekends, how are you guys combating if there's waste? I mean, do you do robocalls to the families to make sure they're home? So there isn't a lot of waste? Is there, is there something you guys do? How much is budgeted for? How much is wasted on the weekend? How much are we throwing away?
We didn't, well, this is the first time we had to work Saturday and that was largely around the weather. And we did not get a robo call out, but we did. PTO Dawn Tompkins, I communicate with her pretty frequently and she's been posting.
Right.
So that we can try to get out to, to some of the families when there's a change in the schedule. And there's been a lot of them because of all this weather, but um, nothing came back on, on the weekend.
Okay, good.
Every, every.
But just not this weekend. Overall, Holly, I just mean like how much, how much goes out there that, you know, I'm, I'm just afraid, you know, I mean, there's a lot of money in this. And how much is going out that, you know, I don't know, maybe they don't, because I know they have to have coolers, right? Am I, they have to have coolers or something at the house if they're not home?
Right.
How many, does everybody have a cooler? Is everybody taking the food? When you go back the next day, is the food still sitting there in the containers that they never picked it up? Like, do you?
We have a couple of families that that happened with, and I reach out to them.
Okay.
And if, if it continues, we, we take them off the list until, until they contact. On a daily basis, we get very few back. It's, it really depends. We never really know for sure when they're going out. We're packing for the same. While we're packing for the cohort list, so we have three different cohort lists. There's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday list. And then a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday list, and then there's a Saturday, Sunday holiday list. So we're packing for those cohorts. Most generally, most generally, we don't get many back. There are days that we get, you know, like five back.
Okay.
On average, so it's not horrible.
Okay. Just making sure that there's not, you know, like, and what could we do to help you? So that doesn't happen, you know, is it, is it because you need to send robocalls? You know, do you need to do something like that? You know, is there, what can we do to help you so that doesn't? So we're not wasting.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I mean.
Robocalls would certainly be helpful. It's a matter of coordinating that.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we discussed as a, as a subcommittee was, you know, when you look at the challenges we can do, well, I can, Holly can do a presentation in depth about an awful lot of different things, you know, and there may be some things that you would want us to delve in more deeply about to be able to understand it. Like, you know, one of the things that, that we think about is commodities. So the commodities is incredibly complex. There are a lot of different implications about commodities from needing to count it as a revenue and as, and as an expenditure from just figuring out how we're doing the ordering since Holly orders it now for up to seventeen months later and, and needs to take that into it. So, so there's a lot of complexity about that. And just knowing what you may want to learn more about that, that Holly could bring back to the board would be, would be useful to know also.
Well, I mean, I, I went through and, you know, probably gory detail on this plan versus actual and, and being able to see, you know, a cumulative effect as the year goes on. The other thing I, I'd really like us to do is to survey the parents and find out their impression of the, you know, the lunches and the breakfast. And I guess it's not just the parents, it's, you know, anyone that's receiving food services from us. Just to, you know, if they're, I don't know, if they're saying that you know, the days of peanut butter and jelly were better. I, I don't know what they would say, but you know, having something where we go to the parents and look at, you know, what do you think of the variety of food? What do you think of the, 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 you know, you guys know better than I do. But I'd really like to hear, you know, make sure that the parents feel like their, their kids are getting what they want. If they've got any suggestions on things that we should do differently, improve, whatever. You know, we want Millbrook to be a, a leading school in the area and, and a school that people you know, really drive to get their kids into. And, you know, every aspect from academics to sports to food services affects that. So that, that, that's my personal hope for future discussion.
I have a couple of questions. Was it, and this is just because I don't remember, was it sent out to all parents? Like email or one of the newsletters that the lunch program is now free for all?
Oh, yeah, many times.
Okay, I thought so. Okay. And the question I had, so I know, and I think I might have asked you this on the side, Holly. Is there a way to do à la carte or are we looking into that? I know you had that in the presentation, but like so kids could get, you know, milk or like a fruit or something and my other question is, I know like before it was, you know, like today's pizza, but you can also get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. And I'm thinking, we can't offer all those choices because of like manpower issues and time and stuff like that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we, we're trying to figure out a way to do some kind of limited à la carte. It would not be certainly like, like it was, where we had multiple choices and hot and, and drinks and largely around the fact that they really, in the buildings, don't let students out moving around too much. So it would require someone to actually go student to student in the elementary or K two building. They're in their classroom at this point. I know Alden is in the cafeteria separated, so that might make it a little bit easier to, to start that process there. The middle school is eating in the gym, so that would require movement of that, those supplies upstairs. And then back down again and, and the high school would be a cart situation as well. She would have to walk through. And then also handling cash and we're not doing that at this point. There's not, there's no cash in the building.
Oh, would, um, like with like a lunch, you know, like I'm thinking the elementary kids, a lot of them drink milk with their lunch. Is it possible, like, I don't know if they come in like the little cartons where when the teacher, I guess, takes, oh, I have, you know, seven kids, they're gonna order lunch today. Can they put on there, like, can I ha, also have five milks? Like for the other kids or anything like that?
Milk, milk is not going to be considered a meal, so it's not going to be reimbursed. So it would have to be a cash sale.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. And then when there are changes in the menu, and I've just noticed that, I mean, like, we just got an email today, which is awesome, that there was a change in the menu. Is, like, is there a, and this might seem like a minor issue, but I know for like a lot of the younger kids, they tend, you know, they might be like a little more picky where they only like certain foods. If there's a, a change in the menu, does that always go out in an email? Because sometimes I've just heard that a lot of times it's on like Facebook.
No, it's on, it's on. It's on the homepage. And if there's a change in the, under school lunch and if you open the Millbrook homepage, there's a school lunch menu in the top right corner. And if you click on that, that's updated as soon as I change it.
So should, should parents really go on there like every day to look?
It could be.
Because like, I know today we got an email, which was great, because like, I know I don't always go on the website. I didn't know if that was possible to make that something where we did that, we sent out an email or, you know, or maybe we can tell the parents. You know, again, this might seem like a minor issue, but with like the younger kids, I just know a lot of parents were saying like, oh my gosh, I had no idea. And, you know, my daughter, my son doesn't like that or does like that.
The best option and the most updated is going to be the district website.
So parents should probably just go on like that morning. If their kids are in school Monday, Tuesday, just make sure they go on that morning to check.
Definitely.
Okay.
Yep. We try to get emails out, but when there's weather and there's no get, no students and, and that kind of thing, the menu on the website is going to be updated. So you're going to know when you're coming back what it is.
And it's always updated like in plenty of time before the kids actually leave to go to school.
Yep, yep.
And then like the free and reduced meals that you had in there, is, is that, is that just tracked even though the meals are now free? Is that just so that we know who would qualify if this, if this, you know, does actually go away where it's not free anymore?
Well, it'll be free till June thirtieth of this year. It's already been extended that long. But free and reduced meal eligibility is linked to lots of funding throughout the district. The percentage of free and reduced meals is, will always be tracked so that programs are available to the, to students in other areas of the district.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Anybody else comments or questions for Holly? Okay, thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the board, the president and vice president report. I really have nothing for this week other than we kicked off this subcommittee last, at the last meeting to look at the power, the process of establishing, you know, what we, we've never really had is a set of board goals, which, you know, could be things like, you know, we want our district to be a blue ribbon, ribbon school district or something like that. That drives down to, to district goals. We're gonna do this by two thousand twenty-one. We're gonna increase this by two thousand twenty-two. Specific things that can be owned, tracked and, and, you know, measured for success or, or, you know, alternatives. And I just wanted to give a chance to any of the folks from that subcommittee. I know you guys had a meeting, I think, yesterday. If you just wanted to throw out a quick, this is what we're where we're headed.
John, you want to start?
Um, not really. How about you?
I don't mind starting if you wanted to. Our meeting, we, we had Gabby from Education Elements on as well. And I, I think it was a very successful meeting. We kind of did a couple exercises to figure out where is the district we're really good, where is the district we can improve and where is the district we really need help? And, and I think with that exercise, it kind of helps us build the goal, not only build the goals, but then back into the superintendent review as well. So, you know, I, I think we're on the right path as far as, you know, setting the goals in motion as well as, you know, the review for, for Laura. I don't know if John and Paul want to add anything to that, but.
Well, I think that, you know, I really thought the meeting went well. I thought Laura was very excited for the administration to take the next step forward. I know we have to discuss the timeframe of doing this, but it's all tied to the overall looking at our plan as a district. It's not just the superintendent's evaluation, the board goals. Everything's connected to each other and it's, it's tied to the strategic plan. And the right way to do it is the way that I think we want to go about doing it. We, we, we can identify either pillars that we feel support Millbrook, pillars that, that, that create and are linked to our vision and mission for, for Millbrook. Do we want to look at reviewing our vision and mission? It's all questions as a board. I, I think we have to decide and then, you know, move forward. And you can choose these pillars and then have under the pillars like different objectives. So like, you know, if Perry or one of us, you know, or the board felt the technology, the pieces of technology, what are the important strands in technology? Not just one technology goal, but a pillar for technology. And then under that, we had three like subcategories or four subcategories. But um, I, I, I really, really like the person that we worked with from Educational Elements. I know that Caroline and Laura had secured that through a grant. I, I think if we can keep working with her and, and keep that rolling, I think it, it would be a big help. And she gave us some options as to where we are as a subcommittee and how we come back to the board. Do you want to utilize surveys more? And, and one thing that, that the superintendent stated, and I really agree with her, is that people want to get excited about coming back from COVID and moving forward. And I think that, that with that like type of trajectory and have those conversations could really catapult this type of committee together to work together. And like I said, whether it, it takes a year or it takes six months, it's going to be worth it. I just, you know, think that maybe in the fall, we should move forward with it. You know, as opposed like maybe right now, but starting to plant the seeds now for, to see where, where, where we go in the fall, I think would be a good idea. So I'm all for that. I support Laura in what she, you know, shared with the committee. I'm sure she'll want to say a few things at some point too. What do you think, John?
I think you guys did a good job in explaining it. We had a little exercise for five minutes trying to come up with some where we thought the district was strong, where we thought it was doing pretty good, all right, and where it was, could use some help. That's, but we, I think we, she was supposed to give us some materials that we got, I think, just before the meeting started here. So I had not ch, had a chance to review me. But, so we'll meet again and I think I'll go from, go from where we started. I'm also going to look at the NISBA. If you recall, five of the board, current board members had a, were part of a NISBA goal session, goal setting session also. So I'll be looking at those notes to see how, if there's some things there that, that help, can help us perhaps. And discuss with the, with Gabby, the
And we did talk about sharing what we received before the board meeting with the board, so they can kind of take the exercise on their own and see where it goes from there. But it, it'll be interesting. I mean, you know, the, the good way to do it is really just go and give yourself five minutes and just fill it out and see what first comes to your mind. And then, you know, we, we see, do a comparative analysis of where, you know, the three of us kind of sat. And then we work together as a group to prioritize what's in there. That's, that's really just the initial exercise. But, you know, obviously over time we build it to what's, what's most important. But Laura, you can say a few things if you'd like.
You did a great job, everybody, for giving an overview. I too, like Paul said, I'm very excited to sort of be a part of creating the process and the timeline and developing the goals. And to what Paul said also is that we're ready to look towards the future. We're exhausted from the pandemic and all the things that we've been doing. And we'll continue to do that work and react and respond and support and teach. But we also want to set a course for a positive and productive for, uh, future. We are looking forward to seeing all of our kids, we're preparing for all of our kids to be in person sometime soon. And so these, these board goals will set that course, set that direction. Because without them, we kind of spin our wheels. You know, we're just trying to figure out day to day, but with this long strategic plan, that will really keep us focused and targeted and making sure that we are watching it along the way. We're evaluating along the way and setting those very intentionally in board meetings and in our department meetings and our staff meetings, all of that. We're all talking about the same kind of goals. We're speaking the same language and all the decisions that we're making are moving us towards seeing the, the goals set by the board come to fruition. So I think it's exciting work. It's good work. It's hard work, but it's going to benefit our kids and our community overall. So I'm looking forward to continuing to meet with the subcommittee.
Yeah, I think you got it. I mean, this is one of the most important things that we have on our plate right now. And, and primarily because, you know, our usual, the usual way of working is, you know, it's almost on a one-year schedule. You try to, here's what we're going to get done, but we never, we, we very rarely have a, a five-year outlook that says, I want to be here in two thousand twenty-six. I wanted, so to get there, I have to be here in two thousand twenty-three. I have to be here in two thousand twenty-two. And seeing if we're actually getting there or if there's something else we need to do, or suddenly that, you know, that just doesn't matter anymore. But it's, it gives, it'll give us, not just us, but any future boards. It gives them an, an understanding. Any future boards. It gives them an, an understanding of where M C S D is on. This journey and, and how to interpret, are, are, are we really getting there? So I, I think this is incredibly important. Um, and I look forward to hearing more as we go forward. All right, uh, Howard, you got anything else?
No, not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right, super, uh, superintendent's report.
Yeah, so, good evening, Millbrook. It's nice to see you all. I have a lot to report. Because we continue to be in our permanent white water and bombarded with new information. As we continue to work in our white water and plan for some more white water in the future. So. I wrote a lot of things down that I wanted to share with the board and the community, and please just ask questions along the way. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to Holly and Mike for your very informative presentations. I always just learn so much from you. Every time I meet with you, I listen to you. There's so much that, um, you offer and give to this community. So thank you. Justin, I have a lot of Justins right now. Uh, the United States Department of Education informed states last night that it will not grant a blanket waiver for the state assessments. Although the New York State Education Department, N I C E D, stated that it is disappointed by this decision. It does feel that the U S D A, D E made the right call in affirming that no child should be made to come to school to take a state assessment. In addition, the U S D E agreed to uncouple state assessments from every student succeeds act, the E S S A. Accountability requirements so that results will be solely used as a measure of student learning. And then moving forward, the department will propose a series of regulatory amendments. Meeting so regents exams would not be required to meet graduation requirements. And to cancel any regents exams that are not required by the U S D E to be held. So N I C E D will continue to have discussions with U S D E and of course I will continue to keep the board updated on this matter. Also just in is the executive order two zero two point nine five. Is continuing temporary suspension and modification of laws relating to the disaster emergency. So Cuomo announced in his executive order, a teacher employed by a P twelve school or school district. Must report that they have received a COVID nineteen vaccination to their employing school or school district. Upon the request of the district for purposes of Department of Health reporting. Nothing contained with this, within this directive shall read as requiring any teacher to receive the COVID nineteen vaccination. And then just another part of that executive order is a way of reporting, um, vaccinations and in-person instruction. Which I will share with the board via email, the, the full executive order. Now, I know there, our families are eager to know what the fourth quarter is going to look like for their children. And at this time, I'm sorry to report, we just don't have all the information needed to set this course. I know there's a lot of conversation and buzz in other districts and what they're doing and what they're not doing. Um, are they gonna spend their K two program? Are they going to create more sections of grades? Are they going to just keep their hybrid because it's sustainable and it's working? So the districts in Dutchess County, I meet with them, the superintendents every week and we talk about issues and ideas. Um, about our hybrid and about many other items. I know there's a lot of discussion around, across counties as well. Westchester and up and all around the states regarding the mitigation strategies of COVID nineteen. When six feet of social distancing is not possible or practical. Dutchess County Superintendent's recently received some updated guidance from the Department of Behavioral and Community Health, the D B C H. Tomorrow, Dutchess County Superintendent's will be meeting with the Commissioner of the D B C H and his team. And reps from the county executives office to gain a full understanding of what this guidance really means. And it gives us the ability to ask clarifying questions. This information has a potential of impacting our current hybrid model in terms of our ability to expand. Once I have that guidance, I'd really like to have the time to meet with the administrative team to unpack this new guidance. And develop recommendations for moving forward. And I'd like to see these recommendations. Drafted and shared with the board by our March ninth, um, board meeting. Vaccination appointments. No questions so far? Vaccination appointments, uh, the county has been allotting fifteen vaccination appointments at a time to our staff, the Millbrook Central School District staff. We have received a total of forty-five appointments. Unfortunately, the ones that were on last Saturday, they were moved. Due to weather to this, this coming up Saturday, this coming Saturday. We have, and then I just wanted to say thank you to the county. They're, they're trying to support schools as well as. Lots of other essential workers. Um, I know the staff who has taken, um, advantage of this opportunity have been very thankful for it. It's not always, it's a little frustrating of, and time consuming to get the appointments made, but in the end. Our folks who wanna be vaccinated are getting their dose one and working on their dose two. So thank you to the county. Regarding rapid test kits, so after months of advocating for rapid test kits, we finally received eighteen hundred. This past week from the Department of Behavioral and Community Health. The M O U that, that we have the agreement with the county. It also permits us to administer the rapid testing under the D B C H's limited service lab. That means our nurses can administer, um, and other people who are trained can administer the, the testing here on campus. A large number of tests allows for a broader voluntary opportunity for our school community and mandatory athletic testing. This round of test kits, this eighteen hundred expires on March twenty second. So there's an urgency to use them, but we will make sure we use them. So, because it allows us to monitor the health of our school community and make, and make decisions or adjustments if needed. We're expecting another delivery of test kits from New York State Department of Health this week and they will expire in April. We'll be reaching out to the New York State Department of Health in mid-March regarding more test kits with later expiration dates. So that we can continue our testing program in the spring. In the new business section of the agenda, um, you will find a resolution there or you've seen the resolution there. It's labeled COVID nineteen test kits. And that combines the seeking of the Board of Education approval for testing. Mandated for fall to athletics and surveillance and the implementation of fall to high-risk sports. The testing again will allow us to monitor the overall health and safety of our school community. Any questions about that?
When does the testing occur as far as the sports? Is it right before the game? Is it the, the day before? I mean, how, how is it? You know, our parents, um, what kind of testing is it? Is it, I'm assuming it's the quick test, so you could probably do it right before.
Yeah, it's a, it's, um, it's a rapid test and it will be after school, right before a game. It'll be by.
Now, the, the visiting team or the team we're playing against, they have the same requirements, so their school is doing the same testing or no?
No.
So are we testing the other team or just our own team?
We cannot extend the testing outside of our, our school community.
Okay.
So athletics and I, they kind of mix, the testing and athletics will mix the conversation. So although short and with many interruptions from Mother Nature, our winter season is running smoothly. We have a few more games left before the season is over. And now we're looking towards the fall two sports, which start on March first and end on April eighteenth. Al, I know you're here and Caroline too. You've been very instrumental in getting this program up and running and I'm wondering if. You could give an overview of the, the fall sports and then talk a little bit about spectators. Can they be there? Can they not be there? And I don't know if it'll be Elliot, um, or Al talking about the live streaming that's happening.
Oh, um, I don't think Elliot is here, but we, um, Al can definitely support the conversation about the live streaming. Um, so as Laura had said, um, winter season is well underway. Um, we're just about to wrap up, um, at the end of the week on the twenty eighth. So it's gone very well for the, the amount of, um, COVID preparations. That the coaches had to shift and understand and be, you know, cognizant of, um, in order to practice, sanitize equipment, et cetera. Um, so things are going very well. On March first, we are set to, um, embark on our fall two season. So that will include, um, high-risk sports such as varsity football, varsity cheerleading. Um, varsity and J V volleyball and, um, a modified volleyball season, which will only be an in-house season. Um, additionally, we will have boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross-country. Um, we'll also have boys' and girls' soccer at the modified level in-house. Um, and boys' and girls' cross-country in-house, um, as well. So that'll be some workouts, um, and some like conditioning and sort of like an intramural type thing. Um, we did run into some complications with modified football, um, quite a few actually. So we have a reduction in a coaching position from last year, which will complicate. Things with the modified level, um, because there's so much COVID, um, protocols and whatnot that needs to be followed. Additionally, um, one of the things about football is there's a lot of equipment involved, um, as you well know. And, um, we are not currently allowed to utilize our locker rooms for equipment storage. Um, they're only allowed to be used as dressing rooms and currently we're not even using them as dressing rooms. For, um, athletics, um, physical education, et cetera. So there's some equipment challenges, um, that the football team is going to have to manage in terms of the athletes being. Responsible for their equipment. Um, you know, taking it home from school after competitions and practice and bringing it back in. Sanitized order for the next day. So, um, that. Coupled with the fact that currently there are only four schools who are exploring a modified A eight-man team. Um, being Fallsburg, Sullivan West, Eldred and, um, Aunt Eora. That doesn't give us many potential, um, opponents to even participate against and. They're far away, so they're outside of that COVID cluster range that, um, we're intending to keep all of our sports within. So, um, just something to be cognizant of, that the modified football season does not look like it's going to be an option this year, which is very unfortunate. Um, but we do intend to, when possible, have some workouts. Um, that we will be able to have students participate in, in order to hopefully have a successful modified A season in. The, the actual fall, so next school year fall. Um, so currently in terms of, um. Considerations, just to keep in context, when we talked about transportation in the past, um. For the winter season, we have less than forty athletes, but in typical past fall seasons, we've had, you know. Two hundred-ish athletes. Um, I don't know that we anticipate getting two hundred athletes for this fall two season. But just to keep in mind that it may be required. To transport teams separately in some cases where we typically would have been able to combine, say, a J V and varsity team like for volleyball. On the same bus, um, that may not be possible due to the COVID transportation, um. Considerations. So just something to be aware of, that there may be additional transportation needs, um, related to the fall two season. Um, and nothing really changes in terms of the guidelines. We actually weren't able to put out information for the fall two season. On family I D, um, any earlier than tonight. Um, one, we needed to have board approval, but we also weren't able to give you all the details of the guidelines and guidance. That had come down from the state or the section until we received them. So, um, some of that only came in as late as last week. So, um, the good news is, is that there's no extreme changes. There's some sport-specific changes to, to be mindful of. For example, um, if a football player removes their mouthguard on the sidelines, they need to sanitize their hands. Before putting it back in their mouth, et cetera, for obvious COVID and, you know, infection, um. Transmission like risk reduction. So just some things like that, not major things, um. We are looking at mask considerations for football. It's being explored. Al is working with neighboring districts. Um, and their athletic directors as well, because as you can imagine, with a mouthpiece and a mask and the helmet with the face mask. Um, it's all very challenging to be able to make those things happen and take your mouthguard out between plays and whatnot. So the athletic directors are looking at, um, safe ways of doing that because things like that shield that the NFL has that comes across your helmet. There are specifications for that. We don't have them in-house, so the athletic directors are discussing that and they are working on that as well. Um, uh, we believe on Thursday, we will have an updated waiver from our council. To be able to put on family I D for parents, um, to sign, giving their child permission. To be able to, um, participate in this fall two season. And some additional information, um, during the winter season, which we are just about to wrap up. Um, there were no spectators permitted, that being an indoor season primarily, at least the sports that we, um, participated in was, were indoor. Um, for fall two, the section does, uh, permit two spectators per athlete. For outdoor sports only. So the indoor sports will still remain no spectators, um, and that's a section policy. That's not our policy. Um, so we can't supersede their policy. We could only make it more strict if we wanted it to, wanted to. Um, so just to be very clear, that there will be two spectators or can be two spectators permitted. Um, for the fall to outdoor sports, so soccer, football, et cetera. Um, but the indoor sport remain no spectators. Yes.
Caroline, does that mean the, the opponent can bring two people per student?
I don't believe so. It's only the homeschool, um, unless something has changed that I'm not aware of recently. But it's typically only Ben, the homeschool, um, for outdoor sports can have two, um.
It's only the homeschool that can have the spectators, yes.
And do we know whether the, the, the teams that we are gonna be placing? I know we can't force them to test. But do we know whether they're committing, like we're, we've received these tests. I'm sure they have too. Are, and.
Not necessarily. Yeah, so not necessarily all school districts were, um, not necessarily is it true that all school districts were able to obtain tests? Um, we're actually pretty fortunate that we were able to, A, um, obtain them and, and be the amount that we were able to get. What is really, um, remarkable being such a small district. So, um, it's not necessarily true that they will all be testing their athletes. No.
So do we know which teams will be testing and which ones won't?
No, we don't. We don't have that information yet. I mean, I don't think many, I don't think many of the other districts are testing. I did a preliminary survey, just a very small survey of surrounding districts. Um, I think there were a couple that were talking about testing, but. Right now I don't have knowledge of, you know, wholesale testing across the board with local districts aside from us.
If we're, if we're testing all our athletes, you know, and then playing teams that aren't testing theirs at all. I don't know, seems like kind of a, it's either a big waste of time or they're being ridiculous and not testing.
Hey Perry, is it actually legal for us to test the students? I mean, is it, is it, we're, so we're not allowed to test our own students?
Yes.
I think we can test our own. We can't test them, the opponents.
Yes.
And if I, if, if I was a parent and I refused the test of my, is my, is my son or daughter allowed to play the sport for that game?
So, no, um, so there's a couple of things. There was just some, um, information that came out. A field memo that, um, was very clear in that students cannot be, and Laura, feel free to jump in here. Students cannot be, um, kept from participating, say, in in-person instruction or any, um, curriculum-related. Academic activity, um, school activity. But, um, because athletics are not what's considered a property right of a child, they're actually, um. There's something that is, um, like elective, you elect into it. Um, school districts can require testing or mandate testing for participation. So it's very different than the, um, academic program.
And just to put a little meat on the bones of what the testing loo- will look like is, um, it'll be mandated testing, if that's what the board, how the board would like to proceed. Testing for all athletes. It'll be team-based testing, so different days for different sports. Testing will take place between two o'clock and three o'clock. And our nursing team and our trainer Judy Fox, rock star team, um, will be administering these rapid tests. Um, like Caroline said, council will be providing updated waivers to participate in the high-risk sports. As well as consent forms for the testing. And we're gonna do the, we're gonna roll out the testing in two phases. One will be the athletics. Um, getting that in place and then we'll roll out a surveill- Um, getting that in place and then we'll roll out a surveillance testing plan where we'll be able to um uh randomly test those who are okay with it, who consent to it um throughout our buildings, just to see um, again, just to monitor the health and wellness of our buildings. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Al and Caroline, but we probably will have about a hundred and seventy-five athletes total.
Um, that's a little bit lower than our typical season, which I think we are um anticipating it to be lower than a typical season. Um, we were only able to, without your approval, do an interest um survey on um family ID, which is how parents will give consent and sign up for athletics. Um, and the exact numbers, Al, I don't know if you have those exact figures, but they were less than our typical two to two twenty-five.
Yeah, they were a little less, um, but with all things considered, you know, still a pretty good response in terms of the uh intent to participate. We'll see what happens when the actual registration takes place.
Yeah, and just to be very specific about the type of testing, um, it's a very non-invasive swab of the nasal bulb. So it's not the one that goes like all the way up in the nasal cavity. Um, it's a very like light swab of the nasal bulb and actually um for the older students, they can even do it themselves.
Yeah, they can see it in the mister.
Yeah, so it's, it's not the one that is typically done at the doctor's office, which I know some people would be more reluctant to do that.
I'm assuming with a positive test that that child would be quarantined just like a normal student. And then we have to do contact tracing and have the parents pick up and everything. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so, and I mean, I know it's something that uh we've had a lot of discussion around, so it's I think we've come to a place of understanding, this is asymptomatic testing, right? So typical um protocols, stay in place. If a child is presenting with any symptoms, they would have to stay home and, you know, they're not going to be there. It's just the students that potentially could be carrying the infection without um having any symptoms and thereby could be spreading it. So that's the point of the asymptomatic surveillance um of the wider school community and specific to those um students who are participating in high-risk sports and are going to be, you know, having closer contact if we can monitor that and um try and keep that from spreading. That would be, you know, this really would only be to slow a spread if we were happened to find somebody positive.
Now, on a broader spectrum, if someone, a normal student gets quarantined, are we giving the parent the option of us giving them a test at this point? Or are they still being sent home and having to get their own test?
Um, so if a student, if for any reason we would need to, um, we could absolutely test um in terms of surveillance of the total school community, and that's what this conversation is about. So it's kind of double-fold. Um, so that's where Laura said, like, there's the connection between testing and athletics, because if it's mandated for our athletes, we also have the ability to layer and do um, you know, the random surveillance testing of our population.
I ask a question about um, th- these tests. Uh, I had read, and I mentioned it to the last board meeting, I think, uh, an upstate county, I can't remember what it, what it, what the name is. Um, they had looked, taken a look at this tet, the these tests and said they're not worth it, not even worth doing. Um, so what is the known accuracy rate of these tests?
I don't actually have the specifics on that. I mean, I can tell you that the negative, um, the false the false negatives um for all rapid tests are um, you know, definitely going to be of concern, right? So that's across the board. But if you recall that we're only testing our asymptomatic students and could potentially catch someone who is asymptomatic but positive, it would really only be to attempt, right, to attempt to layer an extra um precaution on top of what we're already doing in terms of anyone symptomatic being, you know, quarantined and, you know, testing to return, et cetera.
That's the key thing here. These tests are not, you can't hang your hat on them exactly, so.
No, and if a person were, you know, positive, a positive is considered a positive. Um, you know, a negative would not necessarily be considered a negative, and that's part of the reason why if someone is symptomatic, um, they need to quarantine and they need to, you know, get tested, et cetera.
Another question to um, the fields. So we typically don't play sports on uh this early in the season and considering they're still, it's still cold and the, and March can certainly have snow and ice. Um, how can we be assured that the field is not going to be um compromised? I don't know how you're, I'm not sure how you're, how you're gonna mitigate the weather on the field. I, I do you wait for it to melt or what does one do? How does, how does?
Yeah, weather's, weather is going to present some challenges um from the standpoint that on our turf fields, um, we can't run a plow. We could damage the field, we could damage the track. Um, that's an enormous expense. Um, you know, so it's going to be, that is certainly going to be a challenge. Um, you know, we can hope that mother nature is going to cooperate and time, um, we have opportunity to do the conditioning and the preparation for a sport. Um, I don't know, Al, if you want to speak to that a little bit further, but you know, that's certainly something that's going to be beyond our control.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a, it's a good question. It's a, it's a big issue. Um, right now, I'm kind of planning on utilizing gym spaces and maybe blacktop areas like the blacktop area by the middle school, potentially the blacktop areas at the other playgrounds at Alden Elm, just for areas for teams to be able to do activity. Um, depending on how long the snow melt takes and then depending on how long it takes our natural fields to dry out. Um, you know, the turf, the turf can be utilized with the lights, obviously. Uh, following along with any stipulations with the Clements Clause, uh, in terms of lateness, we'd have to be off the field at a certain time, but we could layer our practices for our different sports uh that are outdoor football, soccer. Um, but to say that I'm not concerned about it would, would not be accurate. I'm concerned about the timeframe and the short, the short timeframe in the season and uh the potential for more weather. So we're gonna try to do the best we can to, you know, get the activity going and you know, hopefully be ready for gameplay once, once the fields do melt and and become playable.
So we're not, we're not going to attempt to do anything to the fields as far as mechanical things, uh, shovels, um, chemicals, salts, we're not gonna try to do.
John, you can't apply any of that to a turf field.
I, I just wanna make sure that, I wanna just understand that, that's all. We're not doing any, eh, mother nature's gonna do it, huh? Yes?
So, um, and I also just have word from our nurses that the trainer that actually delivered the test kits um gave them a rating of ninety-five to ninety-six percent accuracy for this particular type of reagent test. Um, and that they've never had a PCR, which is the send-out longer um test, um overturn any of their tests. So, thank you to the nurses for watching and sending me some uh phone of friends over here. Um, so that's, yeah.
And and unless you have, do you have a Zamboni that we could run around the field, John?
We could, we could play ice football.
Oh, we just melt and run it around till it melts.
There you go.
I'm sure you'll get a lot of parents to volunteer to come and uh help snow blow that, to get those kids out on that football field.
I think that is a liability issue and probably an issue that would um significantly damage the turf. I don't know, Mike, if you want to speak to that, but I know that there's a lot of things that we can't do with the turf at all.
The problem is it avoids your warranty. So whatever you have with the warranty on the turf for the life of the the field is done once you put something on it. That includes shovels, plows, snow, snow blowers, any, anything.
Right, because when, when you pick up, when you pick up the snow, you also pick up the little black balls and, y- you know, plus you avoid, you avoid the warranty. The, the field is in the sun. I think the field will melt quicker than anywhere else, because the field is in the sun till morning till night. So what we're gonna do is we just got caught up with moving snow in between snowstorms and it's been kind of hectic. So what we can do next is we'll plow up to the field, up, you know, the, the driveway up and the walkway up. So that'll melt and then the field, we just have to let mother nature. But like I said, the field is in the s- in the sun from morning till afternoon. So it may be next couple of days, it might get a good start.
I mean, we're not gonna do anything that we don't always do, you know what I mean? It, it's just the fact that this season is so out of kilter with everything else. Um, not to mention, mother nature's just been deciding to slap us and slap us and slap us, but um I mean, hopefully, we're not gonna try to take any, and I can't, I'm sure not, any super um, attempts to bring the field back early. Um, it is what it is. Okay, uh, back to you, Laura.
Yeah, just a couple. I just want to say thank you to, there is a lot of work happening behind the scenes for our sports to go up, to get up and running. And so Al and our coaches and the teams that they're working with um score, score people and um Caroline and Brian and our nurses and our trainer. Um, we've been really working as a team and just figuring out these plans of actions um because we do want to see our athletes play. I have been lucky enough to be at a few of the games and it's just so nice to see students um competing. It's, and it's also very informative. I didn't know that Elliot could run a, a cameras and zoom in, zoom out and for live streaming, and then we have Rick, who's this sportcaster, who's, you know, giving us um shot by shot and sharing it with the families in the community so that they feel that they are part of the athletes and of, of their, the event and the um, the competition. And um, yeah, it's, it's just nice to see and my hope is that we can expand and grow and continue until we can, and hopefully there aren't any challenges, um, and that we're able to see spring uh sports come to fruition as well, so.
We're gonna stream the out, stream the outdoor games too.
I think so.
So it's, it's a good question. Um, right now, we are uh streaming the indoor basketball games on the webcam function of a GoPro camera because you need a certain number of subscribers, a thousand subscribers, and we're actually have a we're trying to get a thousand subscribers as soon as possible, and once that happens, we'll have, we'll be able to use a little bit higher function of the GoPro camera to be able to film outside. It's a good question mark that I, and I'm, I'm working on it. Uh, we'll work on it with Elliot. Um, I, I think that ultimately we would like to stream the outdoor games as well. I just have to make sure we have the capability to do so.
So have you put uh anything out to our parents or students or grandparents about uh um subscribing to, you know, jump that number up as fast as possible? I mean, we should easily be able to get over a thousand.
So we did put out a district-wide email to all the families, asking for them to subscribe and have friends and family members subscribe. We have uh certain factions of the social media out there. Um, it seems to be a little bit more challenging than I, I would agree with you, Perry. You would think it would be something that we could uh, that could happen easily, but we're right around, I would guess around four hundred. I did not look today. Really? As of, as of yesterday, we were around four hundred subscribers.
And I, I just got more intel that um Elliot has a tech meeting on Thursday about streaming from the field, trying to make that happen.
Okay. Uh, we should uh, you know, everybody and any parents, you know, taxpayers that are listening. You know, if you didn't get it, don't know how to subscribe, um, you know, contact the district because we really want to, you know, make this a part of, not just this season because it's COVID. We should be able to do this for every season.
Yeah, it's great for relatives that don't live locally to be able to watch um or just can't come out for a game. So it's really nice and I think we're, you know, we're gonna do our best to try and continue it.
Hey Caroline, I have a question for you. I, I, I mean, I should, I should have asked it earlier because it's, it has to go back to the uh to the coaches. How the heck did you come up with all of these stipends? Like, how did, how do you, how do you go about doing that? I mean, there's a ton here. How did you figure out? I mean, like the timeframes, because one, I mean, I know like football is gonna be probably a little bit longer than basketball or football and volleyball and soccer. I mean, how do you, how do you go about doing that?
So I can't actually speak to the specifics of it. Um, I don't know, Brian or Laura, if you want to speak to how that was figured out.
Yeah, it was a negotiation with the, with the union.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Is it based on, like, it's based on weeks? Is it based on, I mean, how does that? Uh, because the C, I mean, is it like a, is if they get this much, sorry, like that much? Because they works eight weeks and then now there's only four weeks, so that's how it's, oh, okay.
There were certain um percentages, so forty percent of the uh stipend for the winter sports, seventy-five for the fall, and eighty-five percent of the stipends for the spring. And that was a negotiation with the, the MTA.
Okay, any other questions on sports? Okay.
And the, the last piece I have is the Owl Pros. MEF provided funding for four Owl Pros. Chris mentioned it at a, a previous board meeting, so it's one per building. It's a three hundred and sixty-degree camera, mic, and speaker combined in one device for a um, an experience in person um for our, for hybrid teaching and learning and teams. So we are in the process of purchasing them, but we wanted to say loud and proud, thank you so much to MEF. We appreciate your support and your generosity and we're very excited for these Owls to arrive and we will make sure that we keep you updated on their arrivals, their implementation, and our new learnings. So thank you, MEF.
Yes, thank you.
And that's all I have to, to report.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. So, uh, next is old business. We've got the some, the nominations for um BOSI's uh candidates. Uh, one of the things that, you know, there's only three seats open, but we can nominate. It's sort of like whenever there's a seat open on a school board, you can, you know, there could be five people nominated to do that. Um, personally, I don't know why we wouldn't nominate all five and let them run it off, you know, in an election. But I wanted to have each of the board members uh give their opinion on, should we limit it? Should we just open it up? Uh, because we need to finish this tonight. So you want to go around? Uh, John, you wanna? Your opinion?
Um, I think, well, all five are qualified, so, sure.
Okay, uh, Claudia? You're, you're muted, kid.
You can't read lips?
Yes, I can.
Um, no, I mean, they're all qua- I, I say the same thing. They're all qualified. I don't, how do you, how do you choose like that?
Yeah, yeah?
Yeah, I had the same opinion.
Paul?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have to pick, is it gonna be five out of five or three out of five? If it's all five, yeah, they're, they're fine. Do we have to make a choice and then vote on three?
We can, we can nominate all five. I mean.
I, I, I would nominate all five, yep.
Okay, Howard?
I agree, uh, you know, they're all qualified and nominate all of them.
Chris?
Concur. I would nominate them all.
Okay, the same thing. So Cheryl, wherever you are, there you are. Uh, if you can just put those on there and send it back. I don't have to do that, right? Or do I need to sign that? Look at this thing.
Cheryl, you're on mute. You were saying something?
Yeah, you can.
You need to do the motion.
Okay, uh, where's the motion? Where's the motion? Um, I don't see the motion. Because if the, the form says, sorry?
Do you want me to read the motion? I mean, you just, you have to do a motion to nominate them and, you know, your second motion and then your vote.
Yeah, I thought they're, in the form, it just says at a meeting on, so anyway. Uh, do I have a motion to uh put all five, five candidates, nominate all five candidates?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any against? Good. So Cheryl, you can fill that form out. It says clerk or, or board president, so.
Yep.
I nominate you.
On it.
Uh, financial reports and warrants under new business, uh, any discussion on that? Uh, COVID nineteen, whoops, what's going? Uh, COVID-19, whoops, what's going on here? Um, do I have a motion to, let's see, what is this?
Perry, I'm sorry. We need a motion, uh, for the financials.
I didn't see it in there. Did I miss it? Oh.
You want me, are you having a hard time with Word docs? Do you want me to read it off?
No, I, I, I got it now. It wasn't showing up before.
Okay.
Um, do I have a motion on the financial reports and warrants? Who said?
So moved.
Go to second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, comments? Sorry about that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any against? Okay, now we get to the COVID-19 tests, test kits. This basically, uh, gives our approval to conduct the testing of athletes. Um, and, um, I think, does it also?
For the higher risk sports?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Approval of the higher risk sports, mandated testing for athletes and surveillance testing of staff and students.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I wanted to, so the motion that we have in front of us is for approval of all three. Do I have a motion?
Wait, no Perry, I have a question.
Um, you questioned, you questioned during, after the motion, the second.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's right, sorry. Uh, did I have a motion?
So moved.
Go to second?
I'll second.
Okay, now go ahead, Claire.
No, it's just because it's on here. I don't want, if there's test kits and because it, it's on here, it says it's for varsity JV and modified, varsity and modified A, eight man football. I don't want these testing kits if they're only being allotted to this and there's no modified. I don't want them not to be able to use somewhere else. It's just, it just has to be taken out. That's all. I, like I said, I don't know if it's just like, this is the only place it can go. And let's just say somebody else needs it and like, no, we can't do it because it's just for that. It's just because there's no modified, you know?
Well, it does, it doesn't, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't specify like a hundred of these test kits go to these sports. Cause it also, the final line in it is about the surveillance, the voluntary, voluntary surveillance testing of students and staff. So reallocating test kits from one section to the next shouldn't, or isn't an issue as far as I can see.
Okay, I just wanted, I just saw that in there. I just want to make sure. Cause I know sometimes it's very specific and you can only do this. You know, and it's, if there's 20 allotted to the varsity, I don't know, just the numbers, 20 allotted to the varsity and to the modified. There's no modified and another team needs it. Can we put it to there? That's all, that's why I'm saying that. That's all.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's nothing that says that we have specific numbers of tests allocated to, you know, say eight men modify.
A quick, quick question. The surveillance is going to be prior parent approval? Is that how you're planning on doing that for voluntary? Okay.
Yep, we'll have, we have, um, electronic forms that Elliot's been working on for consent.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Is there any probability we would run out of tests?
March 22nd?
Yeah, so that, that they're set to expire, but, um, I think we have a good lot of tests from now till March 22nd that we won't likely run out. Um, when they expire, we're getting another shipment, as Laura mentioned earlier, um, due for April, but we aren't able to order any tests, um, for beyond that until March. Right Laura? That was the guidance that we had gotten?
Correct.
So if we don't have tests in house on the 23rd, we don't play until we get the tests, right?
No, we will have tests in house on the 23rd because we're due to, we should, because we're due to get a shipment that has a later expiration date.
So should, should is not will, should is should, right? So you bet that the should does, you bet that the will doesn't happen. Or the should doesn't happen, rather. Um, what happens? The sports don't go on, right?
That's a good question.
Will we be going with sports without testing if we don't, if we don't have the test in hand?
I think, I mean, we're, we're approving that kids will be tested if they run out of tests. I would think sports would be, or, or you'd have to come back in and have the board, you know, and then at that point it's like, oh, why did, why did we test them to begin with?
Well, we're testing because it's allowing us to monitor the health and safety. It's an opportunity to do that. Um, these tests we know are by 1800 and if we don't get more, um, it's sort of, you know, it's, it's our supply has been depleted unfortunately. Our hope is that we're able to continue a partnership with New York State Department of Health and continue to get tests over time. I mean, there are definitely no promises here, but we think it's good for our community and our kids and the sustainability of our programs. Um.
I think the, I think the question is just, you know, if you don't, if suddenly we don't have tests that we can use because they've expired or whatever.
Reword it, reword the motion until, uh, you know, to do testing until, uh, test kits are depleted. And then if they're never depleted, it's not a problem.
Yeah, and, and we have to keep the asymptomatic surveillance of both athletes and our school community. We have to keep the vantage perspective of this being added layer of precaution. Um, you know, we've, we've done really well to mitigate the transmission of the virus in the school. Um, you know, in terms of any time there's been a student or a, a community member, I shouldn't say a student, um, who has been positive. You know, there's been no, um, cases of spread within the school because we're following all the protocols and very surgical in our approach. So the time that we are able to have these tests and fortunate enough to been able to obtain them, um, it's only an added layer of safety. If we continue to get more tests, we can continue to test. Um, but once they expire, if we do not have additional stock, um, that's going to be beyond our control. Um, and we'll still continue to do all the things that we're doing to keep everyone safe while in the building.
Well, let me, uh, I'm kind of confused. I mean, is the board being asked to pass a motion that says we're going to test, you know, we've got these test kits, going to test our athletes, uh, before they play. Um, and we're also going to do the surveillance testing. To me, that sounds like, and if we don't have test kits for three days, we don't play sports for three days.
It's conditional.
It's so students aren't going to be tested every day anyway, right? So it's going to be, um, by sport. We can't test a hundred athletes every single day or 200 athletes a single day. So it's going to be on a rotating basis by sport. Um, and it's really only, we always have to keep in mind, it's only to, to possibly catch that asymptomatic carrier who could potentially infect the larger population.
If we, let, let's say we're testing every athlete once a week. If we don't have test kits to do that, are they still playing sports?
Yes, because this is just an added layer. We're still practicing social distancing, sanitizing equipment, hands, hand hygiene, um, mask wearing. This is just an added layer. Yeah, that's what's been happening in the winter season.
Or higher risk sports.
High risk sports, basketball, yeah. This was just an opportunity that, um, I mean, well, we've been advocating for it quite honestly because we wanted to, to provide this other layer while we could.
Do you have, do you have a, do you have a goal of, um, how often somebody is tested or any thought put into that yet? Is it, is it once a week? Is it once every two days? I, I have no idea.
Once a week.
Once a week.
Laura, did you say before the day of the game that they get tested?
Yes.
Between two and three o'clock every game? Okay. So is there going to be testing besides that or just game day every, for the athletes? Are they going to be testing on other days when they don't have games or just on game day for the athletes?
Yes, it's going to be on a rotating basis. So it could potentially be a game day, but it doesn't.
So what are we, what are we approving here? I mean, we're giving you our, our permission to test them if you can? Is that kind of what we're doing? Cause I, I don't know. It, it sounded to me like when I read this that we're saying as a board, we want our athletes to be tested on a regular basis. And we want the surveillance testing, but we want our athletes to be tested on a regular basis. But now it sounds like we want them tested on a regular basis. If you can do it, if you can't, don't worry about it.
So we're asking for the approval of the fall two high risk sports. In addition to that, we're able to offer while supplies last essentially, an additional layer of, um, safety, public service of the community to be able to test and, you know, surveil the, um, community spread of this virus, to be able to, where possible, keep people even safer as an added layer of caution. So that's where the focus has to be on, from that vantage point, that while we have the ability to keep us even safer. You know, the first layer is the approval of the sports and then we have this ability to layer on an extra, um, layer of precaution by testing since we have a high number of student athletes participate.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm not really sure I understand why. I mean, it's basically saying, you know, at any time you guys could say, hey, look, you know, we, we're, we're just not going to test this week. I mean, there's nothing here that says you, you have to test athletes at all, I guess. Because if we run out of kits, there's no consequence of running out of kits. So, you know, if we're just saying, hey, we're giving you our permission to test kids when you can, you know, test the athletes when you can. And, and you know, that, that sounds like, and maybe I'm wrong, but that sounds like what we're, what we're approving here. We're not approving that our athletes will be tested. We're going to try to test them unless we run out of kits.
But Perry, doesn't it seem mandatory testing? Does that mean?
Well, if it's mandatory, then we can't play sports unless we're doing this testing. Right? I mean.
Unless you went to the point what Howard had said and we're until, until we can't, until we.
Well, yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's, right. I mean, cause it's.
How about if you run out of tests, you just don't play the game that day? You're all worried about being, we're all being negative here about we're not having enough tests. Laura's got a good relationship. She requested the test. Tests are coming. Al's got it under control. If they don't come, we, we, we move the game. You move the game.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what we're approving. I mean.
No, I know. You're right. But I'm just saying, we could leave the approval language. You could leave the approval language. Good.
It sounds like, sounds like we're proving just the fact that there will be tests occasionally and, uh, there's no, no schedule or commitment about, about it. So that's, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, you're authorizing the permissiveness of it. The, the board is, is, is saying that, that you give permission for it to happen. And it will be done on an, an ability basis. If we have the tests, we would do it because we have your permission to do it.
I think we need to change this because it does say, Board of Education wishes to provide for the use of the test kits to conduct mandatory testing of student athletes participating in fall two sports. That says to me, if you don't get tested, if you can't test them, they can't play. Now, maybe this whole issue doesn't matter because we'll get, you know, we're supposed to get these other tests in before we run out of tests. And quite, quite honest, I, I'm more worried about us having tests that expire and we can't use them. But it, the way this thing says.
The word mandatory and, and.
I would just have somebody, you know, reword this so that it says, you know, we'll test them.
You could say they're mandatory one available. So when testing is available.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's really it. It's either one available or we don't play. I mean, that's kind of the two, the two options.
And I think the mandatory piece was supposed to be on the part of the athlete, then order for you to participate. Um, you're also signing this mandatory testing and.
So let me throw an idea. Might we be meeting with someone like a lawyer, maybe this tonight, sometime that we could ask this question and afterwards clarify this issue?
Yeah, I worked with, Margot worked on this. Julie did not work on this. But I can, um, work with Margot in clarifying.
Yeah, I just don't want to find that, you know, a parent comes back to us and says, hey, you said you were meant, you were testing these, it was mandatory. And my kid wasn't tested for two weeks and got sick and, you know, I, I don't want us to have the board going forward saying, we believe we've said that you get tested or you don't play. And what everybody else thinks is we're saying get tested as long as we have test kits.
And as well to some parents too. Some parents may think the regimented testing program, it's, it's, doesn't sound, it, it, it's going to attempt that, but it's not a requirement.
So does the wording that Chris used work for folks?
I, I'd be more excited if it was, you know, written or approved by a lawyer. Make sure that it says, you know, that we know what we're approving. That's, that's the weird thing is I, I personally just don't.
This was written by our council. I mean, I can work with her in clarifying with your concerns.
Well, did she, I mean, when she said mandatory testing of student athletes, to me that says no test, no play.
I don't think they took into consideration that if we don't get additional tests, what happens? That's all probably. When she wrote it, that's, that's what it was.
I agree. That's the problem. That's the problem. People are like, you know, that's the problem.
We could approve this this way and if they run out of tests, they have to come back on an emergency basis or they just don't play. Yeah, I mean, we can approve this with the thought that what we're approving says you guys are going to do mandatory testing of student athletes. You know, uh, commencing on February 24th and.
And it doesn't mean you're not going to, that doesn't mean you're not going to play. You could postpone the game until the next day or whenever you get to test. And how long does it take to get tests Laura? Where, where do they come from? Where, is it Department of Health?
Yeah, Department of Health, but I mean.
Where are they located?
We, this first round we got from the Duchess County local Department of Health.
So someone could drive, someone could drive there if I have a team of 30 girls on my volleyball team and go pick up 30 tests, correct?
If they have them, you know, I don't know what their, I don't know what the availability is. I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm just going back to what Chris said is that will, it's mandatory testing while we have the tests, when the availability of the tests. I mean, the second round is supposed to come today, which takes us into April, which takes us to the end of fall too. And then it becomes a conversation around spring, whether we're able to do that.
Or I think Perry wants to make sure we're protected if we put one available, if the parents assume that they're going to be tested on a regular basis. That's really what it comes down to.
And, and we could say right here, we could, this would be, this is really easy to do. We can say right here as part of the minutes, that you guys are going to establish a testing schedule. Um, which isn't part of this motion, but it's a testing, a regular testing schedule for all student athletes, however you were going to do it here. And if there's no test kits available, then they don't play. Or, or they don't practice or, or, you know, they don't, they're just, you know, the, the season is off until they have the test kits. Um, and then hopefully you never run out of test kits.
Yeah, and I think the biggest piece is while we have, um, the, just in context, the fall two sports contain several high risk sports as opposed to when we get into the spring season. Um, those are outdoor sports and there are no high risk sports. So ideally, you know, this being the first consideration and also availability of tests, um, that will be the biggest piece is getting through these high risk sports um, and being able to make it through the fall two season. Um, hopefully with this second shipment won't be a problem because that will take us through that April date. Um, and then beyond that, we have outdoor and lower moderate risk sports.
Um, so. I mean, we can move forward with this motion and just make sure the district understands that, you know, if for some reason the, the supply chain of test kits, it's interrupted, you got to figure it out.
And look, we'll be back in session on March 9th. So we think you can correct it, amend it then too also.
I think we need to get, I, I, I think we need to get a lawyer involved. I mean, I just want to, I mean, I want to see where it says that it's okay for us to test the kids.
Margot, yes.
Well, they wrote this.
I worked closely with Margot on this and I've had ongoing conversations with, with Julie regarding the mandatory testing of athletes. This was, this was, this was in, in council with council.
Yeah, they wrote this. It's, the only, the only variability in this whole thing is what happens if we don't get the test kits? That, that's really the only issue.
And when are we supposed to be getting the second shipment? You said the 22nd?
It said this week, we're supposed to be getting the, the next round until, and they expire in April.
So if you don't get the test kits next week, then you come back in the following week to a board meeting. And we say, look, we're going to take the word mandatory out. Or we're going to put it in some language about not testing.
Yeah, we meet twice actually before the first set expire. Well, we meet on the twenty third. So and they expire on the twenty second, so.
So we could move forward with this motion, I think. I mean, the lawyers wrote it, it's it's, you know, all of the content is legal. It's really this question of what happens if we, you know, and I don't honestly, I don't trust New York State to do anything right now. So, you know, they could come back and say, oh, yeah, we really wanted to give you those tests, but we don't have. But the bottom line is, we don't have to worry about that right now. We've got test kits right now. If we don't get them next week, then you guys come back in the following week, or if they don't, you know, if they tell you they're not sending them. Uh, if they tell them it's gonna be a couple of days late, then you figure it out. Does that make sense to the board?
And something to consider too, by the time we have to cross that bridge past the March twenty second date, we'll also have data as to what. Um, if any, our positivity, you know, asymptomatic positivity was. By that.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, I I want to make sure that folks know that this is, this is a good thing. This is a a great opportunity to um. You know, monitor, again, I keep saying it, monitor the health of our our athletes and our community overall. Um, we're very thankful to the the county and the Department of Health for these test kits. And hopefully they'll continue sending them to us because they know that we're putting them to good use. It's also like Caroline's been it to benefit for the community overall.
So we we have a motion in a second.
Wait a minute, I'm not finished yet before you do it.
All right.
I agree. This is a wonderful opportunity. Uh, however, i- if this is a flawed motion, if if we're, I understand we're trying to go with it, but it's. We should do the motion properly, but because of time limits and I understand we need to get this done. Uh, let the motion go forward, but I think it's a flawed motion.
Okay, can we make the motion for the first round of testing through March twenty second? And then we can take another motion on the ninth.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Claudia.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I keep going in now. It's I keep like, my screen keeps freezing. Um, so what we're doing here is a board right now, or all the other teams that our school plays, are they gonna be on the same playing field as this? Are they gonna? Have the same rules? Because what if?
No.
What if we go, okay, so let's say we don't have enough testing kits or something along those lines, something happens and the other team is here and we don't have it. Is the other team gonna get the win? Are we gonna forfeit that? How is, how is that gonna work? They've driven all the way out here. Or, you know, or the two hours beforehand, they're all ready to go. We don't have the kids. How does that work for these kids?
We're only getting one other shipment of test kits right now. And if we don't have them, we tell them we're not playing.
Well, like Paul said before, Claudia, I mean, we would know. We would know in advance of the of the game. So like Paul was saying, we'd have to. You know, reschedule the game. I it shouldn't happen right before. But if we're, if these are good until the twenty second, we're supposed to get the second batch in the next week or two. We have, we have time to react.
I got an idea. Why don't we just pass the motion, however, have it have it ending date of March. Ninth, where we we can reevaluate where we're at and by then, uh, Margo can have other wording.
Or if if we need to, yeah, I mean, we'll bring, we'll review this again. Um, not necessarily do a motion, but we'll review this again. Um, hopefully ne- at the next board meeting, Claudia and Caroline will tell us that all the test kits came in and we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, why don't we pa- pass it, uh, pen and then state that we'll be reviewed again on March day. Decision to be reviewed again, but it doesn't have to be part of the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. There any other discussion?
I might have misspoken when I was saying that it would happen, testing would happen between before every game. So I'm sorry, Chris, if I gave you wrong information. It's just going to be a weekly test for our athletes, whether it's, it might be on a game day or it might not be. Just wanted to clarify that.
So any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any against? All right, we'll put this back on the agenda for the next board meeting. We have just a, an update on where we are with the test kits. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next thing is a motion or a. A donation from uh, MEF. For the owl project that was discussed earlier, of a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I I just, you know, thank, thank you to the MEF as usual. For helping us, you know, really figure out next generation technologies, capabilities. There are these for us. Uh, any other, any comments, questions?
Thank you very much. That's great.
Thank you very much. That's awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, uh, tax levy for twenty twenty two, it doesn't need a uh. You just gonna take us through that, Brian?
Yes.
There we go. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the board meeting at which we review the tax levy limit. So you're able to see it in time for my um. Filing with the state before the March first deadline. So the way that this tax levy limit calculation works. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this formula with you. We take the uh, last year's or the current year's levy. We multiply it by the tax base growth factor. You'll remember that I've spoken about that, that we are the uh. Fortunate ones to have the lowest tax base growth factor uh, in the county this year. Um. Uh, and that's based on actual growth within the district, uh, brick and mortar growth. So when you apply, and that's, and that's provided by tax and finance. So um. When you apply that. We have a subtotal here of a little over twenty five million. Um, and then we're supposed to add our pilots. A pilot is a a payment in lieu of taxes. We do not have any payments in lieu of taxes here in uh, in Millbrook. So we have an additional subtotal. And then we have uh, the the tax levy limit uh, formula a- allows for certain things. Uh, we're allowed to. Subtract out claims and judgments uh, that are greater than five percent of our local tax levy. I have yet to meet a colleague who has been able to use that as a um, uh, as a deduct. Um, so. Um, uh, I ju- we just haven't, we've never used it and I've never seen it being used. So uh, it doesn't do, has have any benefit for us. So that gives us uh, close to one point. Uh, we have about one point seven million dollars in this current year of um, uh. Allowable capital expenses that that serve as a deduct to uh, the uh, tax levy limit. So when we do our adjusted current taxi uh, levy. Um, we have a about twenty three point five million dollars. So that's our. Uh, adjusted current year tax levy when we take everything else into account. And then you'll know, and you've heard me talk about CPI. Uh, so CPI is one point two three percent. So now we take this number and we add one point two three percent. And we come up with uh, twenty three point eight million dollars. Uh, then we talk about pilots coming in for uh, twenty one, twenty two. We do still do not have any payments in lieu of taxes. Uh, we have no carryover from last year. Carryover refers to the amount of money that we did not levy. Last year that we could have uh, over a certain amount. So. Our tax levy limit is twenty three point eight million dollars. Um. And and this is the amount that needs to be filed um, uh, prior to to March first. But then we take into account the exemptions to our tax levy limit. Um, again, no uh, judgments. They call them torts greater than five percent. Um, there is no ERS or TRS contribution amount that we're able to deduct for the current year because there isn't a uh. Uh, neither TRS nor ERS increased by over two percent. And now this is our coming year or next year's um, local share of capital expenses. And what that, and what that is, just so you know, is that is all of our, basically our debt service. So we're talking about our uh, the amount that we've paid on previous energy performance contract and we're talking about principal and interest. Uh, for all of the previous capital projects that we've done. Uh, that includes uh, the prospect of doing two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Worth of inner fund transfers to do our uh, two uh, projects that you approved at last meeting. Um, and um. So what that does is we add that back in. And we have about twenty five and a half million dollars that we're able to raise in taxes next year. So now if you come back over here to this calculation. On the right hand side, so twenty five point five million, we subtract out the twenty one, five point one seven four million that we raised this year. We are allowed to raise and remain under the cap only three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars in new money. Uh, that corresponds to a one point three five percent tax levy limit. And that is what we will be recommending. So our budget um, uh, will will likely include a tax levy increase. Of one point three five percent. Um, and that will likely be part of the uh, superintendent's recommended budget. Um, that uh, we would seek adoption for. And of course, this is only on the revenue side. And there are a couple of assumptions that are important to talk about. Um, and that's that A. Our building aid uh, is correct as published in the governor's budget because the building aid. Is important in terms of the calculation for what's excluded from the tax levy limit. We have to add in our building aid because we're, that's an offset to what our capital costs are. And the second assumption is that we are indeed going to do two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Worth of the cap uh, capital projects in twenty one, twenty two. And we know that to be true already because the board gave us the thumbs up to be able to move on uh, the. Um, uh, project at Elm Drive and uh, in terms of the secure vestibule and the project at. The high school, which will give us our mechanicals and the concrete work and the secure vestibule at the high school. So what questions, if any, do you have on the tax levy limit?
Brian, the inflation factor, when is that calculated? Is it over a five year or is it over, how 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 is that, cause I'm amazed that it's only. Uh, point. What is it? Point one or point zero one two three?
But it, well, it's one point two three percent. So that's CPI over a twelve month period.
Right, I mean, so so which twelve months is it? Cause it seems like inflation has been hitting pretty hard recently.
I wanna say it's, you know, I don't wanna misspeak, but I wanna say it's December to December. I'll take that as a takeaway and get it back to you, but I believe it's published by the Department of Labor in January. Um, so I I believe it's December to December, but I'll.
Cause I'm 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 amazed that especially the cost of. Cost of basically everything during the pandemic, you know, but those, especially those are the early six months. I would have thought that number would have been much higher.
Yeah, that would have been helpful.
All right. Any other questions for Brian?
Two, three statewide. That would be for every school district's calculation in the state.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian? Comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Here. All right, um, now committee reports. Uh, do we have anything? I know you guys, the facilities committee reported last month. Anything new? Okay, food service committee. Uh, I mean, basically we saw Holly's report. I think we're uh, you know, we're pretty well caught up. Um, it would be nice to like to see, you know, where we go next or or what we're able to do on the. Sort of plan versus actual, but we'll come back, we can come back to that.
Yeah, we'll book another meeting.
Uh, policy committee? I.
Uh, I'd love to meet, so uh, I'll try to cajole that a little bit. Um, as far as Nisberg, we got something back saying it's her top priority. And I'm gonna get back to her, I think, tomorrow and say, look, I I'd like weekly status on where this is going. We asked for. We agreed to ask. To have her start sharing the progress she's made and um, that's been a week we can have and there's been no response, so. So we have our latest.
Yeah, I mean, if there's.
Everybody that gets involved throws a monster delay and so I don't know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yep, I'll let you know if I need any help.
All right, man. Uh, data committee, anything? Have you guys met?
Oh, we met, um, the data committee has been working in every single building in the district. Um. I met with uh, the two board members of the data committee, John and Claudia. And we had a discussion about all the different types of data that are utilized throughout the district. Um, I know at a previous board meeting, there was a question. As to. Why don't all the different systems speak to one another and why do we hear data for this and data for that? Um, so I went through an exploration of that whole process from the types of data that are utilized. Um, why don't the systems speak to one another, all of that information? And then explain how data is being used on a daily basis and within the district, within each of the buildings. Um, so we went through all of that and we're planning a follow up meeting to be able to answer what type of data um, does the board want to see? So there's a bunch of different metrics. Some of the metrics that are utilized um, are slightly flawed. The state assessment data being of that problematic because we have um, some test refusals. So even if we're comparing our tests to other district tests. You might be comparing apples and oranges if um, our strongest students are taking our tests and some of their weakest students are taking their tests and then there's the refusals. It's not necessarily accurate. So we kind of talked about the advantages and disadvantages of using all different types of data points. Um, and what we are doing at the next meeting is going to clarify what types of data um, the board would like to hear about.
Okay. All right. Uh, leadership team, uh, I think Paul is left. Uh, safety committee. Did you guys, says two twenty four, I don't know what's today, is the, oh, that's Ma, okay. Um, technology committee uh, says we need a board member, you know, I'm part of this subcommittee, so. Uh, why don't you put me down as as a member of that committee?
Perry, I don't mind if if you want a break on that. That's up to you.
Well, maybe why don't the two of us do it and, you know, at least one of us will be there.
That's fine.
All right, you got that, Cheryl?
I got it.
Okay, uh, wellness committee? Anything, Howard?
Brian? Anything on that, Brian?
No.
All right, um, MEF report. Chris?
Um, not much to really report. We did, we did have a couple of meetings. Um. We're just trying to figure out an alternative to taste of Millbrook again this year, unfortunately. Um, so that's what we're working on now. It's just fundraising ideas. Um, still looking for a vice chair, still looking for a treasurer. It's a great group, so I. Implore everyone out there to, if you want to get involved, you can reach out to me or anyone on the committee.
Very good. Yeah, I mean, it's uh. It's it's tough when uh, when you can't get any, you can't get large groups together and. Uh, but we get so much out of the MEF that uh. You hate to see. Missing it, missing roles.
And Perry, grants have been down. So again, you know, I asked all the administrators to spread the word. You know, if there's anything the teachers are looking for, submit the grants. You know, we were happy to do the owl, but we, especially during COVID times, we haven't gotten much of anything.
Yeah, I mean, especially, I mean, if there's uh, Caroline, you know, to your staff, I mean. If they have. If if there's, you know, as we move forward with, you know, however hybrid is gonna change, if they feel like they need. Um, additional. um additional support, you know, additional capabilities, whatever, let's bring them forward.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Dutch County School Board, um, really, you know, we've only meet the first Thursday of every month, and I went through that at the last meeting. Um, the enrollment report is there for your uh, you know, reading entertainment. Um, you know, it's it's uh, it doesn't, it still keeps drifting. Uh, thirty five, thirty six, thirty five, thirty four. Um, I don't know. We need to make this, and I think this is where the board goals need to lead us to, is to making this a uh district that's sought after um even more. Uh, facilities report, uh, I don't see anything like you there.
Yeah, I'm here. I was just gonna take a sheet of paper and write snow on it. But I, to be honest with you, I worked on the other thing and I forgot all about it. And Cheryl asked me for it on Thursday and I I I'll get it to you for the next.
All right. Yeah, I mean, you know, we don't, we don't want you to spend your entire week making presentations, so. Um, and I think a monthly facilities report is is fine. Um, the PTO report, Jen?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. One of the most exciting parts of the meeting, the superintendent's mileage report. Uh, nothing. The uh suspension incident report um is there again for your for your information if you want to uh, I don't know if there was any comments or questions. All right. Uh, questions from the public? So uh, Cheryl, do we have anything?
We have plenty. I tried to go through um while we were doing the meeting and weed out the questions that were addressed. Um, so I just want to say one of the big questions was about students coming back full time, and so I'm not gonna do that because Laura mentioned we're gonna prepare for March ninth to have that discussion about not what the plan is.
Well, the answer, the answer to that question is the plan will be presented on March ninth.
Right. So there was a lot of those. Um, Laura Karen asks, what is this district doing to support teachers getting the COVID vaccine to ensure everyone is ready to be back in the classroom full time?
Yep. So that I mentioned that earlier regarding the county um providing slots uh weekly and actually bi-weekly. We have about forty five people who took it advantage of the opportunity to um for these slots so that I'm able to help coordinate vaccination appointments for these staff members. And then other staff members are just doing it on their own. Um, it's not a requirement. Um, so we, the county and local department of health and Millbrook Central School District are are helping those who are who are seeking support in helping schedule appointments.
Laura, did I, did I understand correctly? And may maybe I misheard, but that I I I've tried, I'm trying to put this nicely. Someone took like R eighteen slots and sets, put it out either in an email or social media. Hey, if you want to get your uh, your immunization, here's, here's when to go.
Not necessarily from our district. It
No, I
Yeah, the county gives um the point person, the superintendent's, a link to scheduling. And um, we shared the link with the with the people that um responded to wanting a vaccination. And unfortunately, somebody or some folks put it on Facebook and shared it. You know, and not realizing the the negative impact, other people from the, from the the outsider beyond the the allotment signed up. And it um, it kind of clogged the system. And then the people who were supposed to make the vaccination appointments weren't able to. So then the county had to cross-reference the names with the names that we submitted and cancel all of those that were not on the list. And then we had to reschedule people.
No, just, yeah, please, I mean, uh, to any of our staff, I mean, I know everybody's trying to help and trying to, you know, help friends and relatives, but uh, these things are so priceless right now. Uh, just be careful with that kind of stuff. Um, any other questions?
Um, this is also Laura uh Karen. Is there additional funding allocated by the state, federal government to the district? And how is that being spent to get students back full time?
Is there additional funding from the state or the feds to get the kids back full time?
How is it being spent? If there is, how is it being spent to focus on kids coming back?
Brian or Laura, you want to answer that?
So uh, there was CARES funding, uh, but it's a little bit of a misnomer. So uh, if you remember uh, last year, um, we got our state aid runs and we had what was called pan, a pandemic adjustment. So Governor Cuomo took away the state aid that we were supposed to have gotten and just uh built underneath it the CARES Act money. So the regular money that we were supposed to have had uh was um just replaced. They took it away and then they gave it away with the federal money uh in order to save state money. Uh, so it isn't extra money. Um, it's an application that's to be made with uh with the state that they will approve. Uh, and then we can claim the money, but it's gonna be the same value of money that we were supposed to get via state aid in the first instance. So um that now there's additional money uh that is um uh additional stimulus money uh that they haven't provided any guidance yet about um how to access it or spend it. So stay tuned.
And I think it's important to, just for the public and just reading social media is to, just to for us to kind of break down like we've done in the past as far as what obstacles we have, why we can't do five day for all. Um, because it does seem like a lot of parents are unclear as far as why we can't when other schools have. So and and that come, could come in March ninth, but I think that's where a lot of the root of these questions are.
Yep. Um, this is Lisa Partalo. What kind of changes have you implemented since September? Details, please.
Changes to what?
Doesn't say.
A very broad question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know if we have time to, you know, go through everything from changes in the facilities, to changes in transportation, to changes in sports, to I, I mean, if there's something specific, I guess my answer would be to contact, you know, someone in the administrative, if there's something specific you want to know about, like uh, you know, what changes have you made within the classrooms or changes have you made with the technology teachers are using? Um, you can either resend that or, you know, just reach out to the, to this uh superintendent.
Um, this is also Laura Karen. Why are we planning for staff shortages after spring break? Why are we not working to alleviate the shortage now? Is the shortage because people are planning to travel for spring break?
Staff, we we suffer from staff shortages for a number of reasons. Um, it could be through isolation. It could be vaccination. It could be life and just life in itself. Um, we're, we're again continued to be bombarded by um things that we've never encountered before. Um, so.
I mean, if uh, if I'm not mistaken, any of our staff that travels to a non-contiguous state still has to come back and quarantine and test before they leave and test after they get back, right?
Right, right.
So I mean,
Just wanted to put that, we don't know if, you know, we, we haven't decided on what action to take yet, but we wanted to just put that on people's radars. Um, I know people are tired of surprises, so just wanted to say it out loud for families to possibly prepare.
Um, this is Lisa Partalo. How many board members have children in this district?
Have, have grandchildren, children, have had kids in the district? Or have kids in the district right now?
It just says have children in this district.
Well, uh, I can say I have three grandchildren in the district. I had two children that went all the way through the district. I have a child that teaches in the district. Um, and I have a spouse that works in the district. I I don't know if, I know Jen has a child in the district. Claudia had two children in the district.
If two, two daughters.
Yeah, Chris has two in the district. Paul had one in the district. Um, I want to mention, Howard had one in the district, John had
I had two kids that went to, they're in the district. They're grown now.
So, there you go.
Thank you. Um, also, Lisa, um, what are the future plans for the district?
Again, that, you know, we don't have time to, you know, really talk about. I mean, one of the things that we're going to be working through is these board goals and district goals. And that will really, you know, I think will change the overall plans for the district.
Somebody mute their mic. Please, somebody mute their mic. It's rubbing against something and it's terrible.
I think Perry's moving papers.
I'm trying to.
He's playing cards.
Yeah, yeah, playing solitaire. Um, yeah, so I mean, I think that question, you know, mostly the questions from the public really should be related to agenda items.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we will be talking more and more. I believe we'll be engaging some parents in the, in the goal-setting process. So sort of stay tuned on that.
But also Perry, I mean, and I think it's fair to say if if with the board meetings we have, we talk about the future of the district almost every single board meeting. So, you know, I I would kind of implore everyone to watch the board meetings because you would get a lot of information on that.
Perry, do you want me to only ask it if it's in reference to the um agenda for tonight's agenda? Cause if that's the
I mean, we've already kind of packed a few. Um,
Um, this is Andrea Corbett. Is there anything planned to honor this year's graduating class? Will there be any kind of event or opportunity for these kids to create memories for their final year of high school?
I I mean, of course, there will be something. Um, I don't know if this is, it's planned out yet for Caroline.
We also don't have details of what will be allowed in terms of celebrations come, you know, spring and early or when those larger events will take place. Um, I know that the class advisors are working on some things specifics yet. Um, and they are pending, you know, being allowed to do gatherings of that nature.
Go ahead, go ahead, Cheryl.
That is it. Everything else was covered. Um,
Okay.
Discussions.
All right. And from now on, we'll really focus on, you know, questions related to uh agenda items. Um, if there's bigger questions, you know, of of where's the district going? Um, you know, I would, I would say what Chris described is, you know, listen to the board meetings. Um, but also, you know, and every so often we have pro uh committees where we engage parents and engage the public, um tie into those, get and get involved in those. All right. Um, let's
Cheryl, can you, Cheryl, can you send those questions to us, to the board, all those questions in the last, in the last board meeting too?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Perry, cause I want you to answer um on CPI and what with that, uh, when that's calculated. So the the language uh in the law says a twelve month period ending six months before the start of the new fiscal year. So that makes it December to December.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Thanks, Brian. All right. So um, at the next board meeting, our future agenda items are uh really the the school calendar review. Um, we're gonna have to do some uh reviews on salaries, um, continue the budget development uh workshops. And hopefully we'll have a discussion uh with the subcommittee on board and district goals. Uh, anything else between the ninth and the twenty third that anyone wants to add to this list? Okay. Uh, nothing on the discussions. So the next is a uh, darn it. Next is a uh executive session. Uh, do I have a motion to uh move to executive session for the discussion of employment history of particular persons and discussions requiring legal counsel?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Paul on favor? All right. Any again? All right. Um, I think we need Laura and Cheryl. Um, I don't have the, please look here. Yeah, it's, the uh stuff is in the administrative section. Um, you know, I know we need Laura. I'm not sure. Do we need, or is anybody here to talk about uh, you know, the principals talking about tenure? Or no?
No.
Okay. All right. So I think we just start with Laura and the board.
Um,
Oh, and Ju- and Julie.
I'm all right. I'm texting her right now.
Okay.
Have a good night, Mike and Sue.
Night. I think
Have fun.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
And Al, forgot about him. I didn't see him.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Al.
All right.
Does that bother you when I do it like that?
Not at all. Guys, see it?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
I'll send Julie in as soon as she pops in.
Le mule.
What?
I need my, I need my snack.
I could use a
We're still on YouTube and recording.